I'd like to call the April twentieth, twenty twenty-three Wall City Council Meeting to order. Carolyn, would you please do roll?
Here, Morgan.
Here.
Stan Anderson.
Here.
Houston.
Here.
Williams.
Here.
Pop.
Here.
Mike Anderson.
Here.
We do have a call.
Okay, let's stand and say the pledge of allegiance. Kelly, you need to be so kind to me that things.
I'd like to lead you through the flag of the United States of America and to the public for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Carolyn, do we have any order of business for emergencies?
No.
Okay. Do we have attendance on Zoom?
Yes, Councilman Stan Anderson's on Zoom.
Okay. I would like to ask for a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved. Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Agenda is approved. Do we have any conflict of interest to identify regarding the agenda? Seeing none, we'll move on to the consent agenda, which includes the minutes of the April sixth City Council Meeting, the claims from City of Wall Fire Department, the expense portion of the budget report, the golf course financial report, and the sales tax report.
Moved and approved.
Dan has moved.
Second.
Kelly has seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries. That brings us to Dana Forman as our visitor, and he's here tonight to visit with us about the West Dakota Regional Water System. And he's with K L J Engineering.
Well, thanks for having me. I'm wearing a little bit of a different hat tonight. We're gonna talk about the West Dakota Regional Water System Project. So we are, we are working for that district and board, so in that regard, not for the City of Wall on this discussion, so. But I know some of the room have heard about this, and really part of what I'm here today is talk more detail about it, big questions, and then just kind of walk council through kind of where we're at today and where we're headed in the future, but. K L J has teamed up with a couple of different engineers on this because it's such a big project that we're teamed with eighty-two S and Black and Beach on this project, so. But just kind of walk, walk council and mayor through this, keep my team and this discussion, and so that's kind of why I'm here. I do also want to mention that Big Chris Bureau with West River Lyman Jones is here as well. I'll kind of get more into that, but West River Lyman Jones is the primary, primary source of water for the city. You guys have a couple wells too, but you guys use a lot of West River Lyman Jones, and I'll kind of get into that. Part of it too, so we'll talk about why we're here, who is West Dakota Regional Water System, I'm on page two. What we're doing and what's next, and questions, if you have questions as I go, just fire away. Let's kind of keep it as an open discussion, so. So how did this all come about? And overall, what we're talking about here is we're talking about bringing water from the Missouri River out to the western part of South Dakota. And when I say western part of South Dakota, that's a pretty broad statement, and we'll get in, get into more of that. But this really came about where West Dakota Development District, which is a different district, but that's, South Dakota's made up into, into development water districts, and on the western part of the state, we have a district. And they, for quite some time, had been permitted to have future water use out of Missouri River. And that came up for renewal, and they said, you know, what is this? Why should we be doing this? Should we keep on paying for this? So what they did is they hired School of Mines to do a study to see, you know, should we keep on doing our future water permit out of Missouri River? And so they started that back in twenty seventeen, School of Mines did. And what they found is they did, they did some canvassing of asking communities of, you know, what do you guys think of bringing water from the Missouri River? And it was, it was really positive in terms of communities and groups really liked that kind of idea of maybe trying to utilize Missouri River waters. And everybody's, you know, a lot of people's reasons for that period. So that was kind of the very start of this, this thinking. And on page four, that table is a table of future use water permits out of the Missouri River. And you'll, you'll see a lot of varying permits there. At the bottom, we have some yellow highlighted, those are the fairly new ones. The, a couple interesting things about that table is you see a lot of those permits back in the seventies. In the seventies, there was a company from out of state that was looking at transporting whole slurry by mixing it with Missouri River water and sending it through a pipeline and then sending it all over the place across the country. And it went to the legislature, luckily that was actually shot down by the legislature, so it never happened, but the bells kind of started ringing for communities of like, holy cow, we better secure our own water rights within the Missouri River. So that's why you can see all of them in the seventies that are, that are pretty significant. And then the recent ones are more of why we're here today is, is communities have seen the need to secure their water rights for future use in Missouri. So some of those are City of Oxell, they're, they're a big participant in the West River Regional System that we're talking about, Rapid Valley, so they're, they're putting their, their permit applications in to secure that, that future use, so. So in twenty twenty, that study, they scanned the stakeholders and went through informational meetings and developed the next steps. And it really, out of that study on page six here, what they found was that, at the very bottom of the yellow highlight, there's, there are so many communities in the Black Hills that have water wells in the Madison Aquifer, and it's good quality water. We, most people just typically hit it with some chlorine, and it's, it's good to use. But what the finding was is that in the normal, normal wet years, there was enough water being recharged back in the aquifer that we're fine. But in dry years, all of a sudden it started, starts to show a deficit, so if we ever have a real prolonged drought, then all of a sudden we're going to have some issues with, with water. And that's, that's based on today's use, and we're having so much growth on the western part of the state that all of a sudden that's a whole nother concern in terms of dry years plus some pretty decent growth, all of a sudden, people are starting to think that we don't have enough water, which is really a, a valid concern, so. On the next page, the, the graph, this graph here, that actually shows, this is, this is what the School of Mine students did back in twenty nineteen, twenty twenties. And the, the dash line, the black dash line is population, and you could actually see it, it goes off to the right of the page. With the one that climbs higher is an, is an increased population, and this, this graph is actually outdated already where we're more on the trajectory of that steeper population curve. And what to notice about this table is, is the red line is a drier, the green line is average moisture, and the blue line is high moisture. But you can kind of already see if we, if we have prolonged dry number of years, all of a sudden we start to really get into having kind of a water deficit there. So that's, that's what the School of Mine students found, and we're already noticing this needs to be updated in terms of what our latest population, which is significantly more, so. Page eight, the School of Mine students, they found that they were looking at anywhere between a three-foot and a six-foot diameter pipe. That's extremely high level and based on some real conceptual type numbers. Once we, once we as the engineers get more into the population that we need to serve, the growth that we need to serve, these, these will really change in terms of what pipe sizes and how we deliver that in different ways, but that, that was what they originally found. Out of that report by the School of Mine students, what they recommended, this is page nine, they recommended that the governance board be formed, so that's, that was then how West Dakota Regional Water System District Board was really formed out of that recommendation. Really start a technical evaluation, and that's, that's why I'm here today too, and then funding. That's always the big thing is how we're going to fund this as we go forward. So as of today, this is page ten, what, what Dakota Regional Water System Order Directors, Dale Tack is the Chair, he's with Rapid City Public Works. Doug Curry, he is with City of Oxelder. No Wonderwood, Jake's here with us today, he's a board member. Daryl Hernandez is no longer on the board. Do you know Jake, is his replacement on the board?
Not yet.
Not, no, where's your place to? Chuck Jacobs with Oklahoma Sioux Tribe Water System, and then Nick Broyles with City of Spearfish. So earlier this year, the board decided to keep, keep that current board going, just because it was, I think they had one year, they had one year under development, and he was decided to do one more year, so. And then Executive Director Cheryl, Cheryl Chapman, and there was kind of the engineering team, so that's, that's the governance side of it today. Any questions on?
Is this, oh, I, maybe October, maybe November, we had a discussion similar to this, and you had asked us, this is the same item here, correct?
Okay.
Yeah. Just checking.
On page eleven, we have a little more information, so, so when it comes to membership, what, what West Dakota Regional Water System is asking is, is we have, we have tiers, and if you're over two hundred connections to two hundred tabs, it's fifteen hundred dollars a year, then if you're under two hundred, it's seven hundred fifty dollars a year, or an associate member, and if, if the City of Wall is interested in being a member, if you'd probably fall under an associate because technically, as, as West River Lyman Jones provides you with. We, we have to check on that, if you guys are interested in being members, that's, we'll have to check on how you fit, and I don't know.
Yeah, I think Cheryl would probably have a better answer than, yeah, Cheryl.
Just a little bit of discussion in terms of some of the more reasons why, when, when, when I talk to communities and tribal governments, and Jake can provide some input here too, but there's a lot of need for more water within the western part of the state. I know, like the tribal rural water system, they have a fair amount of population growth plus just the success of their system, more people want to look up for their cattle, businesses and different things like that, so there's a lot of need for more, just more water in general. There's significant growth population-wise on the eastern part of Rapid City, so that's the Oxelder and Wonderwood area. So there's, there's some need there, then the other part of that too is, for example, City of Oxelder, they can't hardly punch wells fast enough in the ground to keep up with their population growth. Plus, they don't, they, they get pretty decent water out of their wells, but they don't get great water, so having another more regional source of water is a pretty big deal to them, and there's some concern of if there's any ever sort of, you know, also raised arsenic levels or contamination somewhere. So many people are in that same aquifer, so say, say there is a contamination in the aquifer, then all of a sudden we have to scramble and find another source or build large treatment plants, and the state's really pushing to go to a more of a regional type approach, and it's, it saves money, it reduces the amount of infrastructure that we need to, to, you know, there's no point having two tanks, it's similar to have, how do you guys share a tank right now with West River Lyman Jones, that's a regional type approach, and this is just more of it and at a larger scale. Is there anything you want to add to that, Jake? Funding wise, back in twenty twenty-one, the state through the S R F, the state, state Clean Water, Clean Water Act funding, they awarded eight million dollars to the West Dakota Regional Water System, and that's, that's really paid for us as engineers to go out and meet with communities, gather all your data in terms of population, water usage, growth, and then we put it back into our, our models and different things and try to figure out, okay, we need this, this size of pipe here, we need that size of pipe here, or is it, we're going to bring untreated water to this point and then treated water, or it's treated water initially, and it just goes from there. So a lot, a lot of questions in terms of all that, how that comes together, environmental. Environmental is another big component, and it's everything from looking at the flora and fauna that is typical environmental of wetlands and endangered species, plus how does it affect recreation, how does it affect farmers and ranchers, it's all those things, where one thing, just on a more global perspective, we're really trying to utilize the distinct corridors, so can we write away some different things rather than just belong across properties where we can, so. And that, that's a long ways away from actually having a true, true project. So our executive director function, that's actually funded through legislature and some funding at the State Office, Swarms, money, that's an acronym, but it's really just for operations, so Cheryl Chapman, her, her tasks are really funded through different. Page thirteen, people sources of funding. We're going to start to have dues come online here soon for that, I'll give you some funding, and we're also looking at additional funding. Long term, our funding is really probably going to be coming through B O R, Bureau of Reclamation, and mostly, we say that just because they've historically funded these large rural water systems, that's, that's typically how it funds, which is a congressional application. Page fourteen, so what are we doing now? Amnesty and data collection, so that's also why I'm here today. Regardless if the city would like to be a member or not, we would ask to be able to collect your data, and fortunately for us, I know your data, so that'll be a pretty easy task for me, but, but we're out talking to different communities, I was at Keystone earlier today, and, and part of what we do is we say, can you take this form and fill out the data and, and give it back to us, and then we put, put all that back into our model and kind of try to figure out where the water needs to go. We're looking at towards about, we have, we're meeting next Tuesday to give an update, then in about June, we're, we're hoping to be wrapped up with most of the canvassing. And it's, at times it's slow, we, we have two, three meetings, and then it might, you know, towards the end we might have data or get the data in between, but. Looking at, seeking that congressional authorization for funding, technical evaluations, that's, that's really getting into looking at the quarter we want to go down, really try to start to nail down what the system's going to start to look like, treatment and different things like that. Page fifteen, this is kind of just some, a flowchart on how we collect the data and then what, what the communities want for water publication at those. Sixteen is a little bit of a timeline, that's pretty much where we're at today in terms of the canvassing and what's happened. And finally, on, on page seventeen, it's, you know, it's really about, if, if your interest is in having a secondary source of water, really having quality, quality water at all times, which West River Lyman Jones already does for you, and it's, it's, it's more really, really utilizing them and as they're, they're participating already to have more water through them as, as the I D ears. With that, are there any questions? I'm sure there's probably a lot going through your heads in mind right now of this. I, so I, I don't sound like Mary Aguirre, and you've probably seen a lot of this information two, three times now, and the more you see it, you know, you kind of it's easier to understand a little bit too, so.
So funding for this was in front of the legislature this year, and Helene Du Hamel was carrying it. And it didn't go through.
Correct.
Is there still some monies headed our way for that, but, or what happened?
I would have to touch base with Cheryl on that. What, what happened, and this is actually pretty typical at the state level. When that, when that came out, she, she was proposing a direct appropriation of funds, and, and it got revised a couple times. When she first did it, it was specific to West Dakota Regional Water System, unfortunately for her, she didn't, she didn't understand the blowback that she was going to get in terms of upsetting the, the other water districts, the other communities that also need water funding. The bill was revised to save water funding, but then it still, it still got defeated, and that, that is really due to the, the State Department's really pushed that they don't want direct appropriations, they wanted to go back to the state departments like the D N R to go back through like an S R F funding. And there's good reason for that too, because they, they have all the processes down in terms of environmental loan requirements, so they, they know the processes, so, so to go outside of that is not the greatest thing to do either, I mean, it's, it is easier to always go through the department, so, and that's happened before, Box Elder, they tried to do the same thing, and it, it just doesn't go anywhere at the state level.
So there's probably still money there on the state to help with this.
Yeah.
It's just got to be rerouted to make everybody happy. So then Jake, how many, how is wall considered, how many connections, connections does, would wall be considered to have?
Good question. Right, we're winding down on water needs assessment for our own system, and with that information, we can share historical usage data with, with our guests on, on future use, and, and share that with the Western Dakota Regional Water System. That, the, you know, we're not sure where the points of entry will be yet to the, to the, to a pipeline like this. But currently, I don't, I don't know if I'm answering your question, but currently, it is our, in our perspective, the City of Wall is sitting better than, than most communities as far as water resources go, you have a number of your own wells. We have four wells that, that can be routed to the city, and you can also pump river water to, to the City of Wall from, from the door. Did I answer your question?
No, my question is, I'm going back to the dues page, and that would be page eleven. And we talked about separate connections would determine what level you do, you get in at. And I'm, water's a big deal, and it's going to get to be a lot bigger deal twenty years from now. So getting in on this is imperative, and I want to make sure we get in at the correct level. And that we also accommodate and keep in mind those people that are on the West River Lyman Jones now that surround our community and desperately need this water in terms of farmers and ranchers. So I guess that's my question, I don't want to try to come in too low. We, in my opinion, we definitely need to get involved with this, we don't want to be a Mitchell or a, well, with some of those other communities that said, thanks, but no thanks, many years ago, and now they're just out. So I guess that's my question, if you're not sure how to advise us on this, and we won't evidently have to make a decision tonight, I would hope that others on this council can see the value of getting involved with this, and I just want to make sure we don't, I almost said dummy up, but I didn't mean that, I want to make sure that we get at a level that's going to put us in the right place down the line, so that would be my question.
And you were, you were thinking associate is probably what we're.
I agree with Dana, but like he said, our, our meeting, our board meeting is next Tuesday in Rapid City, and I'll confirm that.
I think we should be a voting member, not just an associate member. I agree, we seem to be clear out east, I'm just curious, when they have really, really, really dry years, who gets shut off first? A small communities or Box Elder or Rapid City, how do you, how do you decide when you start rationing the water?
Well, that, that's a good question, and yes, you're very, I, I think, I think that's a good observation of, you know, you of course have more sway as a voting member and a voting member. So, Carolyn, do you happen to know like how many service tabs there are in terms of billing, because this is, this is really like tabs.
That's what I was wondering if that was, if we're asking. We always stay around four hundred and fifty.
Okay, that, that's what I was thinking, you guys are probably over the two hundred here. Okay. Yeah, so what, what the mayor was, was referring to was Lewis and Clark System, the eastern part of the state. There's a couple communities, Mitchell, I think Brandon's, this is probably twenty years ago. They chose not to, you know, they're like, yeah, we got enough water, whatever the deal was. But Brandon now is short water, and they won't tell you that they wish they would have signed up, and Lewis and Clark is too bad, you know, they had a chance, and so. Yeah, it's, it's hard to see the full future, you know, what that, what that holds for everybody, but I, I do know from an engineering standpoint, regionalization is definitely a good way to go, and having more sources of water, more water is always beneficial as well to our communities.
So do I feel a consensus from the council that, yes, we want to get involved, and maybe Jerry's, or definitely Jerry's suggestion, it'd be a voting member and not a a sit in the back row member?
Well, I think, didn't Dana say that we're, would be at the class one member anyway, isn't that what I understood?
Yeah, basically, I'm one.
Yeah.
Karen mentioned prisons are the text.
Yeah.
Okay, so, are we ready to make the decision tonight so that?
Dana, this is our only hope for river water in the future, and our only other hope for wa, water is drilling wells, is that correct?
Correct, yeah, yeah, the, I, I would find it hard to believe that. I, I, I would find it hard to believe that, say, West River. West, West Dakota came through with water line and say it's. Fifty miles north of here. This, the state would not be in favor of you going back to the river with your own line and get here, so. Yeah, this is a really good chance to participate. To use river water, which is really West River Lyman Jones water. Uh, one, one thing to note too, that, that, that is asked when I present this is. Uh, they ask, well, what, what are the other costs? So when, when projects come forward and whatever that may be, maybe it's a treatment plant at the river, or it's a tank somewhere. Public stations. Those more than likely there, there is gonna be a surcharge to the members to help pay for that now. Similar to if you, if you had SRF funding at the state, there's grants with that, you know, there's loan. And your surcharge is really paying for that loan, and then it's spread across all the, all the members and all the tabs, um. We have no idea what that looks like today, uh. And how that would look like in the future too of. Uh, and if this is really a board decision at the end of the day, but. So say City of Wall doesn't get their water for thirty years, but. City of Phillip gets theirs the first ten years. You know, does everybody have to pay the same surcharge if you're a member, even though you don't get water for twenty more years, or is there a graduated scale in there somewhere, uh? Uh, lots to think about, luckily Jake has to make those decisions, not me, but, so, um. Yeah, lot, lot, lot more to come on that, but just, just so you were, the fifteen hundred dollars. You know, that's really your, your membership and if those projects. And along, there will be more to pay on that, but.
I could just interject, um, and I would ask for Garrett's input as well, but. You know, we struggle with some of our wells getting an engineer to come and look at, because there just isn't that many out there, cause. Well, four has been down for how long?
Yeah, probably about a year and a half.
You know, so there's those things to think about as well, I mean, yeah, we're fortunate to have our wells, but. If they're down, they're not doing us any good either, you know?
Yeah, sometimes it takes six to eight months to get the pump or the motor.
Just added information to share, no?
When a comparison to, uh. We just drilled the well. Six hundred feet, uh. I think it's an eight inch diameter, eight inch or six inch diameter, I think, but five hundred thousand dollars. That's today, so. You know, that gives you a pretty good idea, you, you can put. A lot of money into a, a big project like this that. You might get a good well or you might not.
Carolyn, do we know how much water comes out of our wells and how much water comes out of West River when coming right now? How much does West River supplement our home?
I mean, with those readings, right?
Yeah, we usually pump ourselves anywhere from forty to sixty million gallons a year. And then we pretty much just use West River Lyman Jones in the summertime to. To help with the high demand there, and I can't remember exactly. It just varies, and you know, we've been using them. More now because those, the wells were down, you know, couldn't get anybody to work on ones, so.
Yep, I was, yeah.
I just hear, I can't remember those numbers.
I don't remember them exactly. I could get them pretty easily, just not tonight.
No, that's fair, Carolyn, I was just curious.
No, it's great to. You know, I think we all work together, West River and Lyman Jones really well, you know, we provide water. Save the town for them, and then, you know, whenever they have a big project, we can switch it back and forth, so it's good.
Stan, do you have any thoughts or comments?
I don't think there's much to think about, I'd move forward and do it tonight.
And at what level? Oh.
Well, I didn't quite catch the different level, but I'd do the met level that we get to vote and be, uh, I'd do probably the top level.
Okay, class one then is what he's talking about?
Fifteen hundred dollars a year.
Okay.
Second, Dan.
Is, is that a motion, Stan?
Uh, that is a motion, I'll make that motion.
Okay, Stan has moved. Uh. I was thinking, Jerry, Jerry seconded to purchase a voting member class. One, um, due. For Western Dakota Regional. Water system. Is there any further discussion, comment, or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye, aye, aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, um. Yeah, if you guys are interested, I can, I'll send it anyway for Tuesday for the. The board meeting and, um, if you're interested in attending.
Okay, we appreciate that.
Yeah, so I think that's, that's open. Open voting room, yes.
And that's where?
Yeah, it's at the AD two S Engineering Building.
Yes, that's right.
I don't know the address, it's a brand new building, but maybe you could include that.
Yeah, it's downtown by the post office, but I'll, I'll send it to you and.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, I know, okay. Okay, awesome, do you wanna, Dana, as long as you're at the podium, give us a quick update on Echo Valley construction?
Yes, I can, um, Echo Valley. Construction, uh, we are gonna have the reconstruction meeting on Tuesday. So kind of kick it off. Last I knew, and, and more, quite, quite more updates, I had that meeting, but last I knew, they were looking to start in May. Uh, but now I'm gonna get them towards the end of summer in terms of our timeline that we thought, that will look constructions. They, they, they should be bringing a detailed schedule to that meetings.
Okay.
Just around the corner, um. Uh, Stan, regarding use of the airport mailings at Echo Valley. We just need to calculate that a little bit, uh, the airport engineer gave us the amount that will be out there at the airport. So we just need to kind of figure out the percentage to mix it and then. We'll, we'll bring that to the meetings.
Sounds good.
Okay. All right.
All right.
Thanks.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Jake, also for being here too. Okay, that brings us to Preston Johnson. To talk to us about, uh, Crosswind Runway.
If, uh, other thing was just the conditional use permit, they just need to renew it. Is that for all both RVs? Spots and, uh, shipping container terminal, this is for all three of those, so. With two RVs, um, in seasonal use, and then the shipping container is there year round next to the field bikes. Just would like to renew. That conditional use permit if you call there at the airport for the same day.
Still, yeah, okay.
I'll, I'll move to approve that.
Okay, Dan, Dan has moved a conditional use permit. Uh, renewal for the storage unit and two RVs. Uh, at the airport, at the hangar, at Preston's hangar, will there be a second? Kelly has seconded, any further discussion or comments, concerns? If not, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Okay.
Thanks for that, and then I guess the other, uh. Thing I wanna talk about was, um, with the runway construction project going on there this summer. Um, we're gonna be trying to utilize the crosswind to get in and out. For hangering purposes only, it'll be empty, left all the runway that's there. Uh, we can do it, it's gonna be pretty snug. But what I'd like to do is off the north end of the Crosswind Runway. Right about where the road comes into that well out there on the north side, it just drops off in elevation quite a bit. And, uh, I'd like at my expense, just have permission to do dirt work. To level that out, so I have a better transition plane and. Possibly get permission to go clear out across the, uh, economic development property. Clear to the gravel road on the north side. Depending on what possible projects could be happening out there, um. That would cross what is planned to be the road. That, you know, goes out there, but if, if it wouldn't be going in, you know, this year, go across that, and then of course just. You know, take it back to how it was after we get done with the year, but. Be about a hundred, hundred and twenty foot wide that I'd wanna move dirt. Just to get a little bit of crown, and I might have to put in a couple drainage culverts. For the water that would dam up going across there, but.
Preston, would you be willing to show us on them?
Yeah, exactly what you're talking about, so.
Carolyn doesn't have any.
That's, yeah, so Carolyn sent you a map that I mapped out, it's approximately ten acres that it would. Take out of the economic development property, um, on dirtwork, but. So right here, about where this set of cones is, it really drops off, it goes low. But I'd like to do dirt work from about in here to here, where I probably have to add in some fill. And transition to this. Elevation down here, and then from there, I just need to put in a crown and, uh, probably plant some grass. Cause I would disturb some of the alfalfa there.
So if you look in the map above.
Yeah, so here's, here's the wellhouse out there, you can kind of see where the crosswind starts. And I just wanna go from there, clear out to here, and then depending on, uh. What it was like, if I could reach that end, I'd probably have West River Electric bury one hole out there. But I have also kind of feed a underground line that I'd have to have them bury. For me, but. That's, that's kind of contingent upon any construction that might happen up here, if there's construction, I'd just be able to come up. You know, to that area, so.
Well, as far as you know, there will be construction in that phase one, in that blue lot. Going on, well, will that road, um, we have, that has not been addressed at this point. And I would not anticipate that to happen this summer, so, and you only need it this summer.
This, this summer, yeah, and after that, I mean, they would all have to. I take the crown back off of it and, you know, put out alfalfa, you know, back out, get it back how it was. You know, in this area, depending on what you wanna do. Now, that's just, you know, that's air spacing area.
Yeah, we, nothing can be.
We can't build out there, so I guess I'd leave that up to the city, what they want me to do with that. After we get done with it, you can't use it for the runway, um, because if you did extend the runway out that much farther, you'd be. Having to move this airspace and stuff out here, so the end of the runway is always gonna be right here, where it is now. In the future, once airport's back up with the crown again, so that would just be a temporary. And, you know, if we wanted to, this hump, you know, would probably, you wouldn't probably take that back out, we'd probably just leave it level. And I'd just build, and once we got the dirt work done, just another gravel road just right across there for the wellhouse, and those guys can just keep. You know, going in there with their treatment stuff, so. That's kind of what I'm working on, I guess, but hopefully there's any other questions on. On that, seeing as you.
Gary, it's okay with?
Yeah.
Does that affect our hay bids? That was one, um, thing I had and, uh. I don't know who got bids or what, but I, I had mentioned before, if something like this would get approved, that. I would pay for whatever acres I tore out. So. At least they wouldn't have to pay for it, you know, through the bid, just figure it backwards out probably. And I would pay the city that dollar amount too, if they just wanted it for, you know, dollars lost from the bid.
Any other questions for Preston?
And Preston, so if we do everything you talked about, then you'll be able to operate somewhat this summer?
Yeah, and probably the biggest thing is, I don't, depending on some wind conditions and stuff, I don't know how much I'll actually be able to. Like run loads out of there, but it would just increase. The distance I have there for coming in and even getting hanger, you know, at ninety. So it just give me a little bit of safety margin, even if I can just get out to, you know. Halfway into the economic development property, so.
I think. You're probably pretty concerned about weather and keeping them planes inside, right?
Boy, yeah, yeah. Yeah. Yeah, you, you know. He's willing to, to make it right with whoever had the hay bid on, or.
Okay, so would I have? A motion to approve Preston's airport crosswind runway plans then?
Yes, just a quick, quick, so does that all have to be inspected and everything after you get it the way that you need it, who? They don't?
Because it's, it's, at that point, it's a private. Private strip, so to speak, it's not part of the project, it's not. I don't have to follow even the same rule with the. You know, the construction type bid stuff, and say if I don't do it with my own equipment, I'd say if I was, I'd claw or something. It doesn't even fall into some of that stuff that the federal contracts may have made, so.
You know, I, 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 I'm for approving it, but I think we should probably write down everything that Preston said, so like for the.
Yeah.
Crop. Yep. Allowance and those kinds of things, so that we remember.
Yep.
About, about maintenance on the, you know, like mowing and stuff.
That'd be my.
Yeah, that'd be my deal to deal.
Okay, so we, we take care of that in there too.
Our road on, on the airport.
Yeah, I'll be able to rest with the, the grass maybe, so.
So we'll just keep that strip mowed and, and then.
Yeah, just having, you know, yeah, okay.
So. Um, Preston, then considering what he's said, would you be willing to like bullet that or write that in a proposal?
Yep.
And our, and then would our next meeting be to, I mean, if. Would that be too late for you to get started, or?
Uh, I don't think so, I mean, the next meeting is gonna be the.
Um.
On May.
May fourth?
I think that would be fine.
Okay.
Because we need, before I start doing some of that, I need to let those guys out there kind of get some of their stuff done. And, uh. That'd be fine, so.
Okay, cause I believe you have a consensus to move ahead, but if you. With rich, good suggestion.
Yeah.
Perhaps put it on paper for us.
Yep.
And, and get it back to us, and we'll then prove it at the next meeting. Okay, when is this gonna be?
Uh, for me to do the work, huh? Well, hopefully, uh, not much more than about a week if I can get it out.
Really?
Weather, 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 for what, uh, no, no answer.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate that, okay, that then brings us to item number ten, and, um, Tisha. Oh my goodness, so sorry about that, okay. Uh, Tisha, would you, um. Like to talk to us about your Airbnb?
Um, back again, so, yeah, I, I'm pretty confident tonight that I have everything, and I turned it into Carolyn, who guys should have. It all in front of you, um, I have everything checked off the list that I needed, so. Any questions that you guys may have for me?
Yeah, I did receive her sales tax license and copy of insurance. And, um, I shared with you what she submitted, or her application, I should say.
So, yeah, the application, um, for the Department of Health has been submitted, um, the windows are a little smaller than they need to be. Um, so Dar has came over and we have the windows ordered, I can show you this if you'd like, um. He said the windows aren't taking as long this time, so they're gonna hold my license until the windows get. Um, and, and then I'll get my license, but I also had to get a bigger product spinger, which I got. Um, it's on this last page. Um, here, and it says that the Department of Health allows normal rentals to continue while awaiting window completion, so. I think that's kind of that, let me look if I. I think that's kind of that, let me look if I have there, but everything else should be at least.
Um, and the other thing that I noticed on the, this application. Uh, our, yeah, lodging license application, on the back, license expires December thirty first of each year. Do you have to redo this every year?
The Department of Health has to come in and look at it every year, that's my understanding of it, yes. Yeah, that's normal.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Well, very good, and I, I just wanted to make sure that you um were aware of that too, that. Um, and so you anticipate that you have those windows done relatively soon, actually.
Dar was confident, he said windows aren't taking as long as they were during the winter, so um. He said within probably six weeks, you could have it done.
Cool.
But the license did say that you could run without them for now, right?
They hope you're not having to replace one of the G. Cause I know you've done work.
So Carolyn, you're satisfied with the um all of the attachments have been attached?
Yeah, I mean, I, I can verify her sales tax license and her insurance, you know, it's the. Other license from the state for you guys to determine if you're applying the issuing pending that getting done, you know, that's up to you guys.
And you'd let us know as soon as it's completed, right?
Yeah.
So, okay, any other questions of Tisha?
I, I guess I have a question for Carolyn, where this is um. Not temporary, but it's not for like a year. Does she have, is this for three years, like normal, or does she have to come back every year?
Well, my plan would be to submit a letter of request every year since they have to get renewed, plus. I mean, yeah, she has insurance now, but how I know that she might not, you know, I'm not saying that, but I'm just saying, you know, you. Really need to verify that as well. The sales tax license, probably not, I don't know.
Yeah.
I mean, once you have it, you don't have to keep paying for sales tax license, do you? Well, you have to go, yeah, you have to go on it every month and verify it, or yeah, or keep it. So I mean, just those things would be. Just for follow up, I think you want that done. I mean, yeah, that's up to you guys, if, if you're good to just submit this documentation for the three year timeframe. That's you guys, it's called, but.
Are we gonna see this from the rest of the Airbnbs now too?
I have it under my report, yes, so give you guys an update on things.
Okay, so.
Thank you, you're kind of a.
Leader of the pack, leader of the pack, I'm kidding, leader of the pack. Okay, so with that being said, would I have a motion to approve this conditional use permit?
I'd make that motion.
Okay, Jerry has moved.
Second.
And Mike seconded. Any further questions, comments, or concerns? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Okay, that brings us to um the camper proposal. And I think we have Lee here tonight um to stand in for Ken, is that correct?
Yes, I, I guess I'm gonna be here in proxy for Ken Wilson. Ken Wilson is an individual who is interested in buying. The three vacant lots that we have for sale on Fourth Avenue and he wants to use them for seasonal camper spots to play. Seasonal workers and for a business in town, I don't know what business that is, but. That's what he's looking to buy it for and I started looking for, I think he has to get a conditionally used permit to do something like that. And then he would bring sewer water and electric into the property.
He's gonna buy all three, I'm sorry.
Yeah, he would buy all three of those lots, so.
And the, and who would pro. The, the workers would provide their own.
Yes, they would bring, they would bring their, their campers and live in them.
Or RVs or.
RVs or what, whatever, I guess, so, and I'm, I'm third party here, so. Bear with me here, but, but that's what he's looking to do with the property.
And then they would be here for the summer, maybe like May to October?
I, I don't have dates, but I would assume it would be for the summer months, so.
Which, which three lots are you talking about? Be the ones that face Fourth Avenue?
The three lots that are east of the old Hillcrest office.
Okay, okay.
The, is that zoned residential?
That's a, that's a conversation to carry, it's, yes, it is, but I, when I went to file the. The uh.
Resolution.
The resolution, it, it wasn't a, uh, an original copy, so they wouldn't accept the original. They wouldn't accept the resolution. And then I came back to get it from Carolyn and, and I've not, I've not been back to the courthouse. And so I called, or not the courthouse, but.
Registered.
Registered deeds, I called the founder of Registered deeds and I talked with them today because. They put it in the residential listing or however classification, like they don't have all the paperwork, so.
My, my question was there, council being. You know, don't we have ordinance against putting campers in residential areas?
Well, he's saying that it's not actually residential.
Yeah, cause when I, when I talked to the, the. I get all these guys mixed up, um.
Equalization.
Uh, I talked to, uh, you talked to him as well, uh, I don't remember his name.
Joe Grant. Um, so, yeah, like he said, he went to file it. It wasn't original, but they can get really perspective of that. Um, anyway, so when I went out to check, it does show that the corner lot is commercial or. The code that the equalization puts on it shows that the corner is commercial and the other two are residential.
Three, three.
Three, sorry. And um, so anyway, I assumed, you know, I thought, well. Somehow they just made a choice upon themselves. Well, then Joe called me and he said. Their coding does not mean anything about pertaining to the zoning, because we do our own zoning. That it's really up to the city as far as how it's zoned. So he said, just because it has that code on it to look like it's commercial and residential. Then um, it would be up to us, and of course, the planning and zoning did go through the process and left that one lot commercial. And the others residential, it's just not been filed, so I don't know how you wanna look at it.
Well.
As far as.
The, the way, my understanding was the corner lot was commercial and the other three were residential. And now we're talking about.
But they were originally, it was originally all commercial.
It was.
It was originally that whole, that whole parcel until I replanted.
But, but I, I think before we move forward. We should, we should clarify the zoning on those three lots.
When I talked to, when I talked to him, he said, all the city has to do is basically pull the resolute and, and it is commercial. And is that basically what Joe told you?
Except the resolution was recorded in the publication of the minutes, so. If people wanted to go back and look at minutes, they're gonna think that it's zoned what the planning and zoning and.
Well, and then, and, and then, my next question. In commercial areas, can you just? Put mobile homes or campers or?
Not without condition.
Well, and here, I wanna interject on that, so when we bought the property. When we bought it, we actually, part of actually closing on that property was they had to have. Campers out of the property that were being used at that time for summer health. That's been, and Neil used to put up the harvesters there, that property's been used in. This format for a long, long time, this isn't, this isn't a new use of that property. It's something that's been done and was being done up until we bought it.
Well, that, that, that's a history lead, but, but it seems like planning and zoning agreed to zone those three lots residential.
And on his request?
On my request.
Yeah, he's asking Ted Pollak.
Correct.
And return it to its original state.
Oh, you have to go through the rezoning process.
I, I would then.
Okay.
Well, I guess, couldn't you just, couldn't a resolution be done that they wanted to retract the zone?
No.
Why not? Cause it's never been filed. It, it was only a resolution and you can change a resolution by a resolution.
Okay, so it was requested to be rezoned, but the zoning was never accomplished, is that what you're saying?
No, the resolution was approved to have it done. And it was published in our local paper that way, it was just never filed at the register of deeds.
Uh, I, I would still say if it was published, um, you know, that, that's a defect. That it wasn't filed, but if it was published, the, the public perception.
Resolution can replace a resolution.
Yeah, but when you're talking about zoning and publication requirements, th- those are strict. Legal requirements that, um, just because it wasn't filed. I don't think you can bypass legal zoning require.
What did, what did we do with um Mr. Eisenbrot behind us? Cause that was a resolution issue there as well, was it not? How did you handle that?
And it didn't get filed either and um.
That was through a resolution, correct?
Yeah, and they just left it as it was.
So is this not, it looks good for the use of.
Well, I, I don't think that's a good precedence to go by.
You set the precedent precedent though, when you did it with Tim.
But when you say they left it as it was, what do you mean?
It got, I have to think about this, cause there have been so many different zoning processes going on, but um. The front part.
Gotcha, of that lot.
That lot was, needed to be changed to um. Was gonna be changed to residential, the back part was commercial. Not everybody was really comfortable with the front part being residential, because they didn't think it should be built on with the house. And it never did get filed, and so they left the front as being commercial. So that it won't get built on with the house, you know, I mean, they could build up.
So I, I obviously don't know anything about that issue and I know very little about this one. I would say when it comes to the legal requirements for zoning things, it's not something to cut corners on. And we're in litigation over zoning issues right now, I don't think now's the time to. Cut corners on zoning.
You guys were in litigation, you've made the resolution issue on Tim's property.
Well, I, I mean, wh- what would it take, goes back to pl- planning and zoning? You, you request that you got it, the three lots to main changed to residential. You want, want them back to commercial, planning and zoning. I don't see that as a problem, and then it comes back to the council and then it's done, like we're supposed to do stuff.
Mm-hmm, yeah, we can get it planned.
I, I would, I would also think that we would want uh Mr. Wilson to show up. With a little more than a letter, uh, some sort of a plan of what is, what his real plan is and uh. Some sort.
We could get a planning and zoning meeting scheduled.
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I.
It's possible to get that done, right?
And get it done before the next meeting?
No.
Is that a letter, Rick? Do we just have to put a letter together for planning? What do we do? How do we?
What do you?
I have to publish in the paper, I have to call the planning and zoning to find out what date they can all meet and it has to be. Ten days out from whenever I call them, if I get them called tomorrow, so that I can get the publication. In next week's paper, because that publication has to be ten days prior to when the actual hearing is done. So sometimes it can take. You know, if I can't get a form of the planning and zoning, I'm just saying, you know, that would be ideal if, if it all just worked.
Perfect.
Perfect.
Well, it probably would. I'm just throwing that out there. No, but we're, we're all in town, so I, 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 most of us, and so I think, I think it's doable.
Cause so you don't really, I mean, so you don't see an issue with, with him doing this with, with it.
Because I guess. Well, who, who owns the property now?
I don't.
So it doesn't, he have to go to before planning and zoning? Wouldn't we have to go before?
Yeah, that's what we did last time.
Yeah, I, I mean, you're the property owner, okay?
But if we turn it back to commercials, do you guys have an issue with him putting campers on it? That's the ultimate question, that's what him.
That's what, that's, that's what's him, the purchase of the property is whether you guys will approve him to put the campers on there for seasonal use. I don't see an issue with it.
I don't either, I mean, it's a, it's a need.
Because, and I mean, and he's tried to secure housing elsewhere and he can't, so.
I mean, I know, I know Dustin doesn't do that, I mean, he doesn't want.
No.
Full time in there, but last the other.
Couldn't you just call it a campground?
No, because, no, because of uh your guys'. Your, the, the city of Wall has ordinances that if you're gonna do a campground, you have to have twenty slots.
Ah.
And so you can't put, you can't put twenty slots in that little space.
Good to know, good, really glad to know your neighbors.
Just so you guys know, though, if I get this in the paper tomorrow, it won't come out until the twenty sixth. That's when the ten day count starts. So the twenty sixth, then it has to be ten days before that hearing is held. So that's gonna be, ten days would be. May sixth, which is not gonna be happening, cause that's a Saturday, the soonest I could do is May eighth. The next city council meeting after that is gonna be on the eighteenth. So I should call for a special meeting.
Well, and I, 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 I think it's really important that we do things like we're supposed to do things, e- even that.
And that's fine, I just want you guys to know the time.
I don't, I don't know, it might want, it may have to be Mandy that's at the, she's an owner as well, because I don't know my travel schedule. Actually, I, actually, I know I'll be here then, I'm, we're going to college that week, so. Can't, I can't be here that week.
But I, I mean, I think.
What's that, that's, well, I don't, I don't know what that's gonna mean for.
Yeah.
Them getting, cause they're gonna have to get dirt work done and water and sewer and all that brought in as well, you know, I mean. And summer's coming, as everybody knows, doesn't feel like it today, but.
So, and then we have a, a meeting on the eighteenth?
Yeah.
And then it could be approved.
Right.
If, if the council.
Unless you call for a special meeting following the hearing of the.
And does that have to be in person or can that be by way of email or?
No, we can't do email, has to be a public meeting.
A public meeting. And that would gain us how many days?
Um, ten days, cause the soonest I can get it, if everything works, if everybody's available. Soonest I can schedule it is for May eighth, Monday.
So then, if we had a meeting, May ninth, a special meeting the ninth, compared to the twentieth, is that what we're saying? So that's why you're saying that, that saves us ten days.
Right, or planning and zoning held at one o'clock and we have a meeting the evening of the eighth, whatever.
Oh, there you go.
Planning and, easy, planning and zoning could meet on the eighth?
I don't know, I, that's, that's what I, I'm gonna strike.
It, it seems like it might be a good idea to ha- have, if we can have an emergency council meeting the next day, just. Usually I just stack things on top of each other and it doesn't work.
Well, maybe we could uh. Make sure I was muted or not muted, but, uh, maybe we could just, instead of having a council meeting on the. Fifth, or for, what's the next conference, the fourth, maybe, maybe we could just have it on the ninth. Then we wouldn't have to have a special meeting.
I don't wanna cause that much trouble for you guys.
But then, tha- that's not a huge problem, i- if, if the council men and women can be there.
Yeah, I think, I think we're better off going with the special meeting stand so that, because people. Yeah, I think, I think we're better off going with the special meeting stand so that, because people have mentioned that. When we get to sliding our dates around, that confuses folks. And, uh, we're gonna have to do that in some of, for, to meet, and Carolyn's gonna talk about that in June and. July and August the way it is, so, uh, perhaps we see if we can get that planning and zoning set up. And your idea of meeting that very same day with the council, if we can make that all happen. I think that's what we should do, uh, construction wise, that would help is. Get that, all the dirt work that needs to be done, done, give them ten days and, and that's probably gonna be important. Uh, and what we're trying to do is help with workforce in this situation, and, uh. And is there a serious, uh, consensus here if they, if we do all this to jump through the hoops? That for him, if he gets it, uh, fills out a conditional, Mr. Wilson, is that his name? Uh, fills out that conditional use then, uh, he will have to get signatures from his surrounding neighbors?
I was gonna ask about that, because I would be two of those neighbors, because I own the property to. Well, I own the property to the north. I would own the property to the west of him. The property directly to the south of us is Eric's. Commercial lot, and I think, Rick, do you own a lot to the south of Hillcrest? I think you do, you don't get the Waller dorm there.
Oh, sure, yeah.
And then, uh, and then there is, who is, who else is on the?
Vessons, isn't it?
Yeah, Vessons, yeah, Vessons would be one that would have to have a signature from, but I don't know if you have to have, do you have to have a. On a conditional use permit, do you have to have a signature from commercial property owners?
Yeah.
You do? You do, okay, so.
Okay.
But I think outside of that, there's not anybody else. Am I missing somebody that it would touch?
That's the street would be Stevens, Joel Stevens.
Well, no, because it was just, uh, the, the offices between them. Um, and there's nobody in Leonard's.
Leonard's.
Time. Sweet, my, his cantlers, Cali, they own that.
And, and we have to advertise the city council meeting?
A special meeting?
Yes.
Yeah, but plenty of time for them.
I still, I still think we should do the council meeting on Tuesday. I mean, it seems like we're gonna stack up a lot of stuff on one day.
Okay, that can be determined, okay?
Cause we could even have, we could even have a morning meeting, right?
Yeah, we could.
So if you go through all of this effort, the people up at the county, uh, he would okay with just?
Yeah, he said it's, he said it's the cities. He said they don't, they don't determine commercial and residential property, private, uh, property. It's the city that does that.
Okay.
I just, I don't want any hangups on you there.
Well, and, and, and then to, to the question we posed, uh, for Mr. Wilson, he's gonna want a conditional. Uh, use permit to put, how many campers there?
I think it was three, but don't quote me on that. Please don't quote me on that.
He said two or three in his letter.
Uh, two or, two or three, and there's gonna be sewer, water, and electricity, and, and those conditional use permits, how long are they? Like a year, two years?
And, um, how you, how long you want?
But one thing I saw with conditional use permits. You know, you grant it, it goes well, then great, and then we'll grant it again. And if it doesn't go well, we don't grant it again. And I, I mean, that's with any conditional use.
And that's what he had that question. He wanted to know how long a good, a conditional use permit was good for, and I s-. I said, I don't know. I, I don't know if it was a year or three years. A lot of them are three, aren't they?
Typically, it's three, just knowing if you don't get any complaints, you can do them.
Well, yeah, I would expect that if you go in there and you got a bunch of knuckleheads or not, and.
So, yeah, he said his proposal was to establish two to three spots, two to three spots.
Okay.
I wanna say thank you. I appreciate it.
Absolutely.
Really appreciate you guys on, thank you for, and rescheduling our meeting for, thank you.
Well, we appreciate somebody that wants to bring workers.
And, and you know, uh. Housing this year for seasonal workers has just been. Really a struggle, so, okay, all right, it's good, thank you.
Great. Okay, so then, that brings us to the chamber director.
Welcome, please. Thanks, hello. Okay, um, the wall community center report, I, it should be included in your guys' packets, so. If you have any questions over any of those dates, you can let me know. Um, it's pretty busy in April, and we've got a bunch going on in May, um. We have a wedding this weekend, um, and then maybe we have graduations in the photography clinic, which are just a little bit different than our normal everyday stuff. So that's kinda cool. Um, as far as chamber goes, uh, we're planning our first six oh five day event. And some take place on June fifth, and we'd like to have self-decorative vendors set up in the lot behind the powerhouse. And, um, and then also have some local food trucks that set up, um, in the lot behind the powerhouse. That kind of will be parked alongside the street, but in the lot. And, um, and then possibly one in, um, in Zach's lot as well, or along the street next to his lot. And so we were just wanting to see if it would be possible to have the, um. The special event fees be waived for the day, and to have approval to have the, the vendors and the, the food trucks along the street there.
And you said that, was that the fifth?
June fifth, yeah, it's my day.
Okay, so, does anyone have? Um, issues with them utilizing just the bit by the street? So we wouldn't, we wouldn't, um, eliminate much parking. And June fifth is pretty early in the summer.
You said it's on, not on the street, it's on that lot.
Yeah, so we'd like to use the lot for vendor setup, and then we have, would like to have a couple food trucks that set up. On the one end of the lot that would be next to the street. So honestly, I haven't gone back there to, yeah, along, um. Carolyn, do you remember which, is it the fourth, not fourth street?
Right.
Glenn?
No.
No.
Wouldn't be Glenn.
Be Norris's, Norris's Sixth Street.
Sixth, okay.
Okay, yeah, so they would be in the lot, but along the street, and then the one over by state wall would possibly be on the street.
That wouldn't be good if it's on the street. Not on Glenn. What's the, the other sixth, sixth, okay, yeah, Sixth Street.
And we would make sure it was in a way that we're not blocking traffic, or, you know, make it so it makes sense, I guess.
Katie, what's the, Ben again?
For six oh five day.
Six oh five day, thank you.
So do I have consensus to allow, or would I need a motion? Okay.
Garrett, would you be able, just to make sure that it's not messing with traffic, instead, just, my only concern is the one over by Zach's lot, you know what I mean? But if you could just make sure that, that I would make that motion.
Okay.
Depends on what food truck's there.
You know? We haven't signed it yet, so you could put your requests there.
Garrett's food truck.
Okay, so Mike moved to allow use of the powerhouse lot and the street alongs day wall. Is there, Kelly has seconded. Is there any other questions or comments, concerns?
And just to wave the feet, correct?
Stan, did you have a question?
Nope.
Okay, I thought I saw you raise your hand, I'm sorry. Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, motion is approved.
Thank you. I think you need somebody to just kind of make sure things going well all day.
Sure.
If, you know, and get through the food.
I can do that.
That's what I was trying to say, quality.
And we can help you block off.
Awesome. Well, and I think the day before, we're gonna go over, and then we'll have an idea. We're only gonna have, I think, just a couple food trucks. It's our first year, so we wanna. See how it goes before we have a whole bunch of them show up, and, you know, and so the day before, and then we can go over there and figure out where to. Cause we're gonna have to block that lot off probably the night before, and then we can figure it out then.
Cause you'll probably have to help with, if somebody needs water or any of that stuff.
I'm gonna have to borrow your orange cones. Okay, and then I have one other thing, um, I've been here almost two months. And, um, I've gotten a pretty good idea as far as chamber duties and my city duties. And it is supposed to be seventy percent chamber and thirty percent city. And my community center scheduling, managing is not taking up very much time at all. So we had it figured out that, um, the, the thirty percent works out to be about twelve hours a week that I should be devoted to the city. And, um, I spoke with Carolyn because we're, it's very minimal, the amount of time that I've been towards the city staff. So I suggested to Carolyn that if she had any extra things that she would like me to do, if I could take anything off her plate, I would happily do so. That's, well, and Callie has been taking the minutes still, so I, so that's why I'm sitting over there tonight, is I started taking the minutes. And so I'm just wanted to, I spoke to my board about it, and they are very, you know, supportive, suggest, great, take on some more city duties. So I just wanted to make sure, um, you know, that everybody here is aware of that, and that if you see me doing some things that maybe I wasn't currently doing. That's, that's why, and make sure that everybody is okay with that, and, and I suggested it to Carolyn, shit wasn't, it's not being pushed on me or anything. I just feel like for twelve hours a week, I was currently, I mean, it, it just wasn't, you guys were not getting your money's worth as far as that thirty percent. So, um, you know, I just, I guess I want to make sure you guys are aware, make sure everybody's okay with it, and if. I can answer any questions or anything, just let me know.
What, and I said you come through a month and a half ago, Karen. Garrett had it in a snowplow.
With that?
We talked. Pool manager.
Oh, yeah.
Well, that's even better.
Like, can I wear shorts? But yeah, I just, like I said, if anybody has any questions as far as at any point in time, hours that I'm putting towards chamber or the city, just let me know. Cause I'm an open book, I can tell you what I've been doing, and, and, um, and I keep track of it like all of us do, so.
Yes, you do. Samantha Daley, uh, timed she, so, um, what you're saying is exactly true.
Yeah.
And so, does anyone on the council object if she helps Carolyn out a bit, who is Karen?
We appreciate that very much.
Thank you.
I do too.
And I know Carolyn does.
Yeah.
Okay, and Jerry, it's okay with you and?
Yeah.
Kelly?
Somebody's volunteering.
Oh, no.
Kelly wanted to come in and do that.
You know, my, my board knows, you know, my, I know my first responsibilities to the chamber, but you guys need to get your thirty percent, cause you guys put a lot towards. Towards me, my being a city employee, so.
Okay.
Yeah, and then the only other thing that I had is, um, just to let you guys know, I'm gonna be gone from May second to the fifth for the annual Mace conference. So if you need anything during that time, I'll probably be checking email and stuff, but I won't be in the office. And then, um, our next chamber luncheon is May ninth, and it's gonna be at noon at the Badlands Lo. And then our next chamber board meeting is May tenth at seven AM right here. And that's all I have to.
Okay. Thank you, thank you for helping with the minutes tonight, we appreciate that.
That's absolutely.
Okay, that brings us to public, uh, comments. Uh, that is a time for members of the public to discuss or express any concerns. Um, no action will be taken, and you would have a three minute limit. Does anyone want to speak for public comment tonight? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to the fireworks business update.
So the last time it was brought that the fireworks, um, business was wanting to put a building on. Corner of South Boulevard in Maine, and there was kind of some. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Sorry, between committee meetings and council meetings, I kind of forget what's where, but, um, and there was concern on that, yes, uh, the neighbors there. But having some fireworks in close, but, um, just as a comment, he said that they use family fireworks. So they would not blow anything up, but anyway, um, so he started working with wounded knee over there. And Eric has measured the space out, and so that is the plan right now to, um. Place it there, and it would be, um. He'd be, so he'd be asking for a conditional use permit, and it would be placed there beginning in May. Be there in June and July, and then he would move it off. He will be selling the fireworks from June twenty seventh to July fifth. And then the, July fifth, the building or the container will be emptied until it, yeah, is moved. So just wanted to update you, see if you guys were okay with that location.
Did you, did we have anybody that was to inspect the location? Cause I know that was, we talked about that, that so we could possibly have to make sure there are certain feet away from.
Yeah, Garrett, I think is, you mean?
For like the setbacks or?
Well, just because they're explosives, you know, I don't, does some, does somebody inspect that?
No.
Cause I may be the fire marshal, mate, but I don't. I just think they.
Now you're closer to gas stations. Got surrounded by gas stations.
I'm just saying what he told me, and I don't know much about fireworks, but he said that, um. You actually have to light the fuse on them. You can't just have a. A flame in the building, you know, type thing, and to set them off, and it. It would not, they're not of the powerful that it would blow up the building. You know, inside.
But I, I, maybe we should look into the gas station thing. So who could leave? Garrett, could you maybe just check, would Jim know? I mean, somebody, did somebody inspect out when they were out there?
Fire marshal would always, I know he was, but I honestly don't. I don't know.
Cause I mean, I would, I mean, somebody would have to go inside and. My own to start them on.
Well, but there's also the people that throw a few down all the way to their car. I've seen plenty of that. And one zips back and right through the doorway or something, but, but I mean, my thing is, is I just don't want him to keep looking for locations. If the answer is gonna be no, if we could kind of know ahead of time, who, who did maybe check with, just so that it's done.
So if it's a conditional use permit, does he need to get permission from the neighbors, like the gas station and the motel and? And, and maybe the fire department should be notified that they get their take on it.
Well, you know, I guess they don't know that. Think about that, cause. Like with Lee's case, it's commercial, but they're using it for residential purposes is why he was required to get to. Condition, no, you start this, Wilson. But this is a commercial building with a commercial lot.
So would that be kind of like the common sense, getting one of those containers over Raleigh?
Right, and they don't have.
Right, you don't have, yes, they've interested in that, okay. Yeah, I just, I.
Building center gets their green house, you know.
And that's my thing, we're just getting kind of close, and if you gotta move all that stuff to do all of that work out of eight for it not to work out for him.
Yeah, and did they decide where they put it for sure, or?
He just said that Steve was willing to work with them, so I guess, you know.
So if you put it on the east side next to the garden rail, you know, or it'd fit there, or it'd fit against. On the south.
Cause there was, was there a vendor there? No, it wasn't last year, it was two years ago, right? They have flag banners, stuff like that, so. And they didn't have to get signatures or anything. I just don't know how it works with explosives.
So maybe we check with either the state fire marshal or Jim Kidder, or the fire chief and. Just, just to put some people's minds at ease and.
Yeah, I, I just kind of think, and I, I'd be kind of concerned about. The, the gas station.
So maybe somebody meant, um, measured that and figured out how far to their underground tanks are or whatever, so. Okay, Carolyn or Garrett, would you look into that for us? Okay, Carolyn or Garrett, would you look into that for us?
Well, I think a good effort, he'll have to do the measure, but I can do the.
I would just, not so much to have a gas station on fire, but there easily be some panel off that we're over seeing. And we approve it and then find out, hey, that, you know.
We gotta be two hundred and fifty feet from the gas station, something like that.
Yeah, I, and that's what I just don't want him to have to go through. I mean, move from there and he's talked to Steve and then, you know.
Right.
Just kind of get him so he can have some sort of plan.
Be a pet of the, pet of the game. Okay, any other?
So if all that's okay, are you gonna make, wait till May fourth, cause he wants?
As long as Garrett looks it over and it meets all of the requirements, I don't see a problem.
No concern. So I guess I need that in the motion as long as, you know, there's no.
Are you okay with that, Rick?
Thinking about it. Stan, are we gonna get blanket approval that if Garrett and Carolyn check it out, they put fireworks across?
But I do have one other question. So if you're just gonna sell fireworks June twenty seventh to July fifth or whatever, why would he, he's gonna have it sitting there sent from May? Is that what he said, was what you said?
So yeah, so the way I understood him, he's leasing this building right now and I don't know if, who he's leasing from. He may have to have like a three month lease form or something. And then of course to sit down and then to get it stocked and cause I think he has other businesses that he's dealing with as well or his company maybe or.
Because he is fairly, uh, he, he does a lot of these. So it would, you would think that if he was setting it um, across the common sense, it would occur to him that's a gas station. And it seems odd to me that he would not himself know, well, jeez, I can't put it there. So with that being said then, and if we uh, clear this, are you saying that you think we can move ahead? To give approval? He actually has not submitted a conditional use permit yet at this time, right?
Not the actual form, you know, he's checking.
He's, so what we need is information is it looks like it would be okay, then he can do his conditional use. And wouldn't that be what we would approve then?
Yeah.
With a motion?
Right.
Okay?
But not wait till May fourth to come back and actually, oh, I mean, basically you're just approving a piece of paper.
Okay.
But if you guys get that information, you give that information to him, he can fill out the form and get it to you as soon as possible.
Right.
And then we'll make the motion.
Okay.
That makes sense.
Are you on a motion tonight, Karen? What?
If you don't make a motion tonight, you're gonna have to wait till the May fourth meeting, is what I'm saying. And he said he's planning on moving that in here beginning in May, so I'm just, I know you said you don't wanna hold it long, but if we find out he's fine, then the location.
I have enough concerns about this. I, I think you guys should do the research and we should go for it on the May fourth meeting. Just I, because it's, it's kind of new ground.
That and a precedent that when someone hasn't submitted an application to pre-approve it, I, I don't, I don't like a precedent like that. It was, you know, a request of, of it, he just didn't actually fill out the paperwork. It's just a matter of signing his name and the location and how can he do that if he didn't move the location, you know?
Right, but I mean, we have those applications for a reason. And if that hasn't even been submitted, I, I just would caution the council against establishing precedent of approving applications that haven't even been submitted.
So let's say, say this, that we, it appears that we're in favor of this. Based on the fact that the, uh, that it meets fire standard codes of and you can let him know that, so if he has that sitting at exit one fourteen and he can pull it in there on May fifth then. So is that acceptable to everybody?
Yep.
And then we gotta get the fire information first.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's approved.
Does that make sense, Mike?
Yeah.
At all? Okay, Carolyn, that's all right. Do you understand what we're doing?
Yeah.
Okay, that brings us to fourteen, Ms. Bivin, Dr. Bivin.
Oh, good evening. How we doing?
Good.
Good. Well, um, I'm, we've had quite a spring. So far, we have had zero golf meets. We've had two track meets for the high school and two track meets for the middle school so far. But the good news is we're about wrapped up on our standardized testing um, with the six through twelve. So when the weather clears up, they'll be ready to go, but it has been quite a spring for, for all of us. Um, elementary will start their testing next week and so we will hope to have that wrapped up by the end of the month. So, um, be on the lookout. We'll be looking at having a title one meeting sometime in May. Uh, we do encourage parents and community members to join us and, and have a discussion about direction of our school district. Um, we, that announcement of the actual date will go out in the newspaper. Um, April Schultz will be attending the governor's luncheon for uh, the high academic achievement that she has. Um, Bell Victorians throughout the state are joined together in this meal. Uh, we have the tie conference on um, next Monday and Tuesday. Myself and a couple of staff members will be attending. The focus is on STEM. Uh, we just um, offered a STEM class to our eighth graders this past year. And it's been very successful and we hope to expand um, some opportunities there for students. Uh, I applied for a workforce grant, a two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar workforce grant. We'll find out Monday. We, if the winners will be announced, so. Um, we are moving uh, forward with our um, CTE wing with the two classrooms and the separated wood shop and welding shop. And then that grant will help with the, us, some of the cost. Um, other activities, the FFA return this last week. The FCC LA will be um, taking off tomorrow morning to head to um, Two Falls for the state convention. Uh, Sunday night, the twenty ninth and Monday night, the thirtieth will be the spring play uh, in the uh, powerhouse, so um, hopefully you can join us for that activity. And you know, today is April twentieth and May twentieth, right around the corner, and that's our big graduation. Yeah, so.
A month.
A month and still no golf meet. Tell me that, I'm like, no, we haven't, have we? It's been quite a spring, so, but you know, God bless the moisture, so.
Sure.
Been great. Any questions for me?
I do, but it'd take you all night, so. I'm wondering, they're making such a big deal on this social studies program. What is that? I don't understand what's happening somehow, what?
Um, okay, the standards. Um, where, uh, there's two concerns going on in the, in that one of them, it's the depth in the elementary of these standards. And just the um, the human development of whether they can comprehend that material at that young age. Plus, um, what's the impact on the amount of time spent on reading? Science and math compared to social studies in that elementary. Um, the other concern and it, it should be a concern, this is an out of state um, provider for standards. And it wasn't developed by uh, South Dakota educators like it has in the past. And so you talked about precedence on other issues earlier, what kind of precedence is this? Uh, we also, you know, this is how Common Core was set up is from an out of state entity. And um, some of the same constituents that argued against Common Core are now saying that this is the way to go, so. Um, yeah, that, you know, it just, we'll see what happens. How it impacts in the future.
When you make big city people make small populated areas decisions.
Well, you know, it comes right back to local control and, and if you have school boards that are taking on um, voting to come together and disagree with these standards, you know, what kind of precedence is that final decision made?
Just been hearing a lot about it.
It is, it is something to take a look at, you know, what is it, how's it gonna impact it when we bring up the reading? How is it gonna pick, impact the science? Uh, is there only specific curriculum we can use? Well, then that is state controlling your local government and the decision they make for curriculum, so.
It is one of the last um, pieces that got state standards. I mean, isn't there already math and science in place?
Yes.
Yes.
But they're out of study rotation, okay? And social studies was up for revision um, last year. And educators come together, did the process, where the standards and so forth. They were rejected and brought in these standards from Hillcrest University in Michigan.
Okay.
And didn't third, school board in Rapid City vote not to basically continue on with this?
Correct. Well, Bush, we did would. Many of them.
Yeah, there's a bunch of, yeah.
Well, but you know, that's how it turns out.
I got a quick question for you. Both our athletes don't have the opportunity to compete. What happens with state for our athletes, especially, you, you know what I mean? Cause they're not, do they just not have their hands to qualify together?
I have. I have no idea. I, all I know is I dealt with the blizzard with football, I dealt with the blizzard with wrestling and I dealt with the blizzard with girls' basketball and I'm really concerned if I have to deal with a blizzard with golf and trash.
I am too.
That's only been my concern, but yeah, we, we need to meet so we can qualify.
Yeah. It's like they have those seniors not have the opportunity to be, senior year, I don't know.
Yeah, we, we, I would say um, next week is gonna be interesting because we got transportation forms out for golf every day next week. But you know, we only have so many days to get to qualify again. And uh, I.
I wanted to remind you too, though, uh, Chamber is doing cleanup day on May sixth. So if you have some kids that need a place to go and pick up trash, spend some time on that. You would, we'd love to have the kids help.
Yeah, that would be.
I think that's been done before, so.
Yep.
Okay, sounds great. All right.
Anything else? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that brings us to item fifteen and that is a concern form.
Yes, it's been submitted to you, so names shouldn't be shared on this at this time, but pictures have been shared. So you can see the mess and could see the concern that was addressed, so um, it's just been procedure that I bring any concern forms to you and you guys give me direction on how to handle it.
Well, it's generally you send the letter, right?
Right, and I mean, I included as supporting document, the ordinance.
Yeah, well, you, that ordinance has, there's so much in the ordinance that that's it's.
It's support that that.
Thank you.
What the concern are, you know, that there are valid concerns with this. But I just need the motion or the direction with the motion to send a letter. That, how many days for take care of the problem?
We have a template that covers that so that you know. Okay, what's the wishes of the council then?
Yes, I'd say send it out.
And clean up by what time? How many days?
Days.
Serious. It'll be all summer.
Aren't the days between correspondences, initial correspondences laid out in our protocol?
Yeah, I think, yeah.
And say May eighth and that way they can use the free cleanup day.
You just answered my question I was gonna ask.
Transfers tension and.
But there are a couple cars there too, that's the other, a car and pickup.
Okay, so what's the wishes of council then? Do you have a motion?
I don't think two days is enough time.
I was kidding.
Okay.
And just make your motion authorize correspondence according to the established procedure.
No, I won't make that one. He's my neighbor. I look at it every day.
Got it.
Only make it, I don't care. Kelly has moved.
There's a business right there that's trying to run and it's just getting worse every day. I don't know where all that stuff's coming from.
Okay, Kelly has moved to send a letter um, based on the protocol.
I'll second that.
Okay, Jerry has seconded. Any other questions, concern? Comments? Seeing none? All those in favor say aye.
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 With a date of completion.
Can you invite him to a party theme picnic so he knows that he would be available, okay?
Okay, with the completion day of May eighth. Okay, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, that brings us to the Wall Airport Grant Application.
Um, so the airport engineer indicated that, that the um, airport instruction project going on. There will be a change. I included that email, cause there's always language that I struggle with when I have the news. Um, crust, right, so that we can, the runway approach, would that be or are you aware?
Oh, for the instrument approach?
Yes.
Because it'll have a different name and all that and the estimated cost to have this done after the project's complete is like eighteen thousand dollars. And so this grant would cover the ninety, I believe, and we'd be five and the state would be five.
The total cost would be how much?
Eighteen thousand, I'm pretty sure.
Eighteen, did you say thousand? Okay.
What was indicated there?
Cause there's some other bigger numbers on this and I just wanted to make sure.
Well, I'm sure that's. Yeah, I don't have, did I not make myself a copy of that email because? So that it has a copy or the?
Or is that, is that the one you were looking for?
Yeah. Yeah, says we estimate four and a half hours in a challenger for a total estimate of eighteen thousand one hundred and seventy-six dollars and forty cents to provide a commissioned flight inspection of the cafes and mirrors.
Yeah, so that would be, they're just gonna fly the approach with the governing aircraft to verify it to accuracy, the ones that verified the approach and deal with.
Verify it accuracy, anyone's that verified in the approach should be able to.
Okay, so with that being said, and knowing that it is eighteen thousand. One hundred and seventy-six dollars, I see now, and forty cents, do I have a motion to approve, uh, applying for this grant? I make that motion. Kelly moves, is there a second?
Second.
Is there any other concerns? Comments? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, attorney report.
Okay, I'll just start with, um, what's been listed under my icon on the agenda. Event agreement, um, and I went over, um, that at the last meeting that I attended, city meeting that I am just. Bringing my mileage rate up to my, my same rate that I charge all my other cities. And the current market standard, um, of a dollar a mile. So I drafted an amendment to the city attorney agreement that just reflects that. Um, mileage rate of a dollar per mile.
Uh, Stephanie, I had a question, has this, this, uh, your contract was, uh, made in twenty seventeen, is that true? And has there been any other amendments or updates or corrections in that timeframe?
No.
Okay, um, because I didn't realize, I didn't know that there was a contract. So I asked Carolyn for your contract, and I actually noted that in that original contract. The mileage rate was seventy.
And that was actually a typo, but, um, the, the original, uh, rate was presented as a dollar. And, um. The council requested that I drop it to seventy-five cents, drop it by a quarter a mile. Because it's on my way from Phillip to Rapid, I was willing to do that. So. And so this would just be to bring it back up to my standard rate, which was actually the original contract presented to the city. And, um, I I think in the revisions, somehow that seventy-five got. Written as seventy, but it was seventy-five cents a mile that I was asked to drop my dollar rate. Which was in the contract I originally presented to the city. So it was a verbal agreement that was then reflected in a revised contract that was finalized.
Okay, cause that was just my question if. If this original contract had ever been amended or revised. Cause I find that very odd that I have in front of me a signed and notarized. Contract with the wrong amount in it.
Well, so the original contract was for a dollar a mile, and I agreed. To revise it down to seventy-five cents a mile. And I've always charged seventy-five cents a mile, you can look at mileage rate the entire time, it's always been seventy-five cents a mile.
You're right, it has, well, since twenty twenty, it has been seventy-five, and I just.
It it's been since seventeen, since two thousand seventeen.
I just find that odd that we have a signed contract here with the wrong amount in it.
So in two thousand seventeen, it was presented as a dollar a mile. Uh, there were various revisions made and a verbal request to drop the mileage rate by twenty-five cents a mile. Which I agreed to verbally, and, um, I also noted that in the final. What was signed, it looks like it was transcribed as seventy cents a mile, but it was never. And the course of dealing between the party reflects, it's been seventy-five cents since two thousand seventeen.
So that's probably reflected in minutes somewhere.
Yeah.
And billing.
And billing, yeah, it's in every invoice that I've submitted to the city since two thousand seventeen. So.
So this was signed in, on the twenty-first of February. I should be able to look in February minutes of twenty seventeen and. Find that voice difference, is that true?
Yeah.
Anyone else have any questions or concerns?
No, I think a dollar a mile is.
Price to gas now looks fair.
It's more than fair, Stephanie, thank you, appreciate that.
Are you going to Rapid City this evening?
I'm not. I'd make that motion, we approve the dollar a mile.
Second.
Kelly has moved that it be, that we have, well, actually what you're doing is approving the amendment.
The agreement of a dollar a mile.
As for one dollar, is there a second?
Yeah.
Any other questions or concerns?
Um, I I think I would request a, um, a verbal motion to, um, clarify. The understanding between the parties dating back to two thousand seventeen at seventy-five cents a mile based on. Course of dealing as billed ever since February two thousand seventeen at seventy-five cents a mile.
You know what, I'd like to have enough time to go back and look for those minutes. Before we do that, we're dealing right now with this agreement for one dollar. And we have a motion to, uh, it's been moved, it's been seconded. Uh, any other questions or concerns?
I I have a little problem with that, Mary. Marty would have, the former. Mayor. Would have caught that, and if if it wasn't right, he would have changed that. I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, I mean with Stephanie, I. I think there was a typo. Um, Marty wouldn't have let that go through. I don't believe, I I think she's done well for wall and I don't, I think we're. Net picking right now.
Okay, thank you for your opinion, but if, I just find it difficult, we're dealing with an attorney. With a contract. And to say it's a typo. I I just feel uncomfortable with that right now, so it will be reflected in minutes. I want the time to read, to go back, I'm not gonna take the time right now, but I want the time to, uh, look into that, and it should be. In those minutes, so at this point, we have a motion on floor that's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, anything else?
Yes, so, um, I was contacted by Ron Parsons that said he never received. The countersigned agreement with him for services. From you, so I just wanted to follow up on that and make sure that that is signed and returned to him.
I have never seen.
Um, I know you and I spoke about it on the phone and we made revisions to it. Which I relayed to him, I was actually on the road when we discussed.
Oh, that agreement, okay, sure, and you're talking about the February first one? That was relative to the five thousand dollar agreement. And, uh, Rick actually signed that for me, and it was returned.
Okay, so as long as, because I specifically said, it was my understanding that the mayor. Had handled that, and he said. There was an original about the five thousand dollars. That was returned, but he said the actual appellate agreement for his services for the appeal, he had not received. The signed copy last I talked to him, so I am just following up to be certain that that has been done.
No, it has not been done, cause I haven't seen it, and I didn't know we even come to. I I didn't even know that had been discussed as to what he is. Has, have you all seen it? Do you know what she's talking about? Have you seen a contract?
He said he sent it. And I forwarded the email to you.
When did you send me?
This evening.
What time would that be?
Before I left.
What time would that be about?
Um. Within, between four and probably six this evening.
Oh, well, I had a, a, okay, so you. So you're, you're sending me a contract relative to an appeal?
No, I sent you the email that he sent me. Indicating he had never received the countersigned agreements.
And where's the agreement at?
I don't know, I forwarded his email, which I'm following up on. Saying that he has never received the the countersigned agreement, all I did was forward that email before I left. For reference purposes, that the agreement that he sent has not been signed and sent back.
Do any of you, have any, he sent it to me?
I assume so.
Have any of you seen an agreement for an appeal press?
January thirty-one. A copy went to the wall mayor at G W C dot net and and. From the wall city.
Open that up.
And then, and then, uh.
Is that the one you signed?
No, I I I I think this is, this is, this is, uh. I think this is a different one.
Right.
I I I mean.
Five thousand dollars.
No, I don't think it's a five thousand dollars.
Well, open it up, if you have the email.
And again, Mayor, I forwarded it to you, so you should have it in your email as we speak. I forwarded his email that he attached what he said he had sent before I left my office.
Tonight.
We could reference it, I sent, I forwarded that email to follow up before I left my office this evening. And it was him saying he's never received the countersigned.
You're exactly right, he has never received it, because I have not seen it, and you just sent it tonight at six o'clock.
I I'm not saying I sent it, I'm forwarding the email and you attached.
I hear, okay, if you forwarded an email to me at six o'clock tonight, no. I, so I have not seen one, and so that's why I wouldn't have signed it.
Alright, well, that's why.
I am asking the question, if he's sent one, who would have negotiated that?
Well, I I I think we're gonna get into this in more detail, I think we should sort it out in executive session.
Agreed. Okay. Alright, anything else? Except I really wasn't planning on an executive session tonight.
Really?
Neither.
Um, I guess I just have, um. The, uh, appeal number, which we have been assigned, um, and that can go on the public record for the public interest. Appeal number three zero two seven seven, and our Supreme Court brief will be due by May twenty-fifth. Which is a Thursday. Um. So that's just latest public info on the litigation. Stephanie, I'm sorry, what was that date, May, May twenty-fifth?
What was the number again?
Um, three zero two seven seven.
Okay, thank you. So.
The state of the already pulled that, uh, dude, can you pull that up to county courthouse or how do you?
You have to get in touch.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so that brings us to item eighteen, agenda request, Mr. Moon, do you have any questions today?
I do. And. I I wanna make sure that everybody knows that this is stuff that is not something that I brought up, this is something that. People have came to me with concerns about what's going on. And apparently I've been told that if I don't get up and ask a question about it, nobody knows about it, so that's why I'm here. And basically what it amounts to is the. Going forward with what we've got happening, which is, we know that we're, the city of Wall isn't content to court. We know we're either giving out a building permit or we appeal it, which we've done. And that's where we're at with that, the big thing is, I've been asked about. Well, one is like, what is the chain of events that happens with the Supreme Court, you were talking about the appellate number that you gave? And it goes before the Supreme Court on the May twenty-fifth, now do they just look at it?
But it does not go before the Supreme Court.
Then I need to know what is the, what happens on the twenty-fifth of May?
We submit our brief.
Okay, now, after you submit the brief to the Supreme Court, then do they set a docket date? Or do they look through it and say, there's no reason for us to look at it, or what is the chain of events that happens? Going forward.
So then the opposing side submits their brief, we then submit a reply brief. Then it's set for review in front of the Supreme Court. Um, likely that would be this fall, but we can't predict that. And the Supreme Court determines if it wants to hear oral arguments or not.
That was one part I was going to is that they, this deal, like you said, they'll look at it and then they'll see if. We have to have a in-person meeting, not get, all the lawyers get together and. Show what they have and then the Supreme Court gets to make their decision, right? Or I mean, at least look at it.
I mean, usually for oral argument, the Supreme Court already has their decision made. But particularly when it's a, um, a question of significant public interest. The Supreme Court does schedule it for oral arguments, because lots of people are interested, in this case. This affects every municipality and state, so it's probable it will be set for oral argument in the fall. That's what Ron Parsons believes.
That it, that we, that they'll go ahead and go to actually get to order.
Likely.
Because they don't actually do that with every case, they look at it review and see if it's worth going through and then going through there.
Well, they look at every case.
Right, that's what I'm saying, right, yeah, they don't go through oral arguments, they don't do the the deal like they did with. Was that Dakota State or whatever, where they had all the Supreme Court shows up and then they have the, that's basically what oral arguments are, right? Okay, um, now, as far as. Us as a municipality. Uh, we pay, it it just keeps going, I mean, we pay you, we pay waiting any day, we pay, uh. I mean, as this goes on, right, and there's no real set. Price is what this is gonna cost us, that's been a concern, is how much more is this gonna cost us from what we've got now? That I know there's really no way of saying, yeah, it's gonna be another fifty dollars, you know what I'm saying, but I mean. As a ballpark, person should have some kind of an idea of what. The expenditure is gonna be maybe.
Uh, Mr. Parsons agreed to cap his fees at twenty-five thousand per day.
Okay, and then now does that cover all the attorneys that are involved, you and Hague and all, everybody?
He is the lead appellate attorney, he agreed to cap his fees at twenty-five thousand per day.
Okay, and that's whether we win or lose.
Correct.
Yeah, okay. Uh, and like you said, the timeline is, hopefully we'll get somebody to look at it maybe in the fall. I mean, the Supreme Court, excuse me, I didn't mean anybody.
Yeah, it it's not an option, if if you file a notice of appeal, the Supreme Court will be reviewing.
Right, but there's no, I've set time and they're gonna look at, we hope we get it done in November or whatever.
We don't get to set the Supreme Court.
Right, and, uh. The biggest question was, is what is our plan? If we win, we know what the plan is if we lose. What does the city have for a plan if we win? Because if we win, that means it it does away with the content of court citation, right? Which means then the building permit that the judge said the city had off, uh, had to issue. They don't have to, right?
Correct.
What happens after that?
Ball is in Love's court, the city got sued by Love. At the, the, you know, if Love decides to resubmit an application, Love's decision.
And, well, okay, so then. If this is the thing, then what, how does this affect future building permits? And what I mean by that is that the way I understood most building permits through the city. Is basically they, you give them a plan, you made sure that you took care of all of the, uh. Zone, zoning and all, or not zoning, the building permit, the, all the safety concerns. And that's basically it. Other than this, and this one. I mean, they haven't had any issue with any building permit before or any building permit after. This one has got. I don't understand how it got in such a bind to start with.
Because Love sued the city.
No, that's not what I'm talking about. What I'm talking about is it's over basically the building permit. They, the city denied Love's their building permit. And they said, well, we think that there's a reason that we need to take it to court, so they took it to court. Because that's what this all boils down to is building, right?
I mean, there's a lot of factors that have gone into the litigation.
Well, but the, but the main thing is building permit because they want a building permit to put in a truck stop. That is the main concern with the litigation is. I mean, long and short of it, they want a building permit and the city said, we're not gonna give you one, which is, that's the long and short. And it's the only building permit that they built, they, they, according to. Uh, testimony. That Love's did nothing wrong in applying for their building permit. They, they did, they had the plan, they had all the concerns taken care of. And then the city says, well, we're just not gonna give them a building permit. And that's where Love said, yeah, maybe not. But anyway, that's, that was the story because. That's why I say that's, how does this affect future building permits? Because we're gonna hopefully have more people come to Wall that wanna build stuff. And if we look at. They. Do the same thing, I shouldn't say do the same thing. They just want a building permit. This, like you were talking about precedent, this actually gives a bad precedent for building permits because. Basically, if you don't want it. The city council says, even though they did everything legally. That they, the city says they have to do for a building permit. They did everything the way the city said it was done. And then the city says, no, we aren't gonna give you one. Because. Well, that's just what it is. I mean. You know, and that's why, that's why we, people were asking about. How does this affect future building permits? Because like you said, it is a bad precedent. Because this means that if you decide that you don't wanna have something in there, as long as everybody. Decides that they're, I mean, I, I guess I don't see what the, I don't see what the problem was with doing it. I just don't see at this point what the problem was with doing it. And that's what people ask me is. If I get a building permit. I, what I meant by that was that. When people put in for building permit, this has been the only one that they've ever actually came to the point of saying. You know, we did everything right, we still don't want it. And that, that was just the question that somebody'd ask me is how does this affect? Because it's zoning and everything doesn't have anything to do with it. It's just, how does this affect building permits going on from here? Because they really had done nothing wrong in the way that the, it looks. Other than the fact that the city council said, we just don't want it. And that's, that was, that's the big question I've heard is that. How is this going to affect going on down the road?
Well, I, I think the, the city council is, we granted all kinds of building permits. And this is a very complicated case and. You know, you're act, uh. Asking us to predict the future a- after the court thing, depending on how it turns out. Boy, that's really, Jerry, that's really complicated.
Well, it's. That's not predicting the future. What I'm saying is, is that we did it this way before. And we've done it this way since. And now we've got this one and all of a sudden.
Uh, I, I, I don't think it's that, that simple. We have a case that's going before the Supreme Court.
You're appealing that you're appealing the, you're appealing the contempt of, contempt of court.
It's a contempt of court, and I think the council has been diligent, plus we spent about four years on this. It, it certainly wasn't precious on our part and, uh, you know, a lot of the, there, there, there's, uh. It, it's a small town and, and there's people that are, are very pro Loves. And then, then, and there's people, uh, that, that, um. You know, live in the Calhoun addition that, you know, are really concerned about it, but. I, 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 I don't think we can sort it out tonight. It's going before the Supreme Court.
No, that's, you know, but what they're, what the concern is, is that. This is, like you said, it, it's just. It's just confusing people.
Jerry, four years ago when this started. They had numerous meetings concerning Loves, uh, trying to explain, and the people that came. The majority of people that came and spoke up were the ones that didn't want it out in their neighborhood, in their backyard. And I think that. I wasn't on council at that time. But I think, and I'm sorry if I'm putting thoughts in some of your minds or in your voices. But I think what they thought was, okay, these people do not want this. The majority of people do not want this at this time, four years ago. So they voted against it because of our comprehensive plan that we now have in place that says. As a council, we get to. Our decisions are ba- based on, yes, zoning and building and, and. All of those tick, 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 uh, bullet points. But we also have to take in. The human factor. And the human factor at that point. Was that this was going to disrupt forty families out there. Jerry, you know darn well having a truck stop in your backyard in that. You.
No.
The, this, this is the premier part of town. They, they spent lots of money out there. They bought out there because they, they were in town. But they had backyards. They had quiet, peace and quiet. They wanna put in a Loves. They're saying maybe seventy to eighty trucks a day go through there. We're, we're not equipped, we're not equipped, number one, that I, uh, exit one ten. Is not set up for that much traffic. And go.
Well.
It's, it's.
Yeah, I think it is, it is.
My point is, four years ago. Where were all these questions? You know, why, why weren't the ones that were for Loves, why didn't they step up and say something? What I heard in, in the meetings that I went to, I heard so many people against it. Either two or three for it. But the, the, the majority. Were against Loves.
Well.
And that, that, I think, you know, four years later, that it's kind of, you're a little late to the ballgame.
Well, the thing, the, what about, what, in my opinion, and I mean, everybody has their own opinion. They're kinda like, you know. But what I think it really boils down to is the fact that. At some point, the law has to figure into this, which means that if I have a chunk of ground. Or I have a business or I have something that I wanna do something with. And if I did everything that the law requires me to do.
So then we just let the judges decide on everything?
No, 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 no. What's? No, that, no, it is the law. That's why you have the law.
What is the law?
The law is if you do. You should be able to get a building permit.
That is not the law. That, this case will determine the law on that subject.
No, I'm not talking about determining the law. That's when you're talking stuff in the future. I'm talking about the law.
There is no law that says that. There is no law that says that. At, at best. What we're doing is researching precedents in other states. In a case where the, the. Law of the case is that this council has the discretion to approve or deny that permit. And use it. That's the law of the case. So if you wanna talk about the law of this case. It is that this council has the discretion.
No, that's not the law I'm talking, I'm talking about the law. If you, if you apply for a building permit. You have to do stuff by certain guidelines, right?
Of course you do. Are you asking this council for any action?
No.
So this is a public comment and you should be, now chair, point of order. Uh, limited to three minutes.
No, no, we are not that hard. He has an agenda by request.
Just because you ask to be put on the agenda for public comment doesn't mean you should be. Exempted from our three minute public comment required.
Well, that isn't how our agenda reflects. He, he has been here before. He's asked, he's asking for clarifications. I don't think he's gonna get it, uh, tonight.
That's all, that was all I was concerned about. This is what I have heard. This is what I was asking. Is, I mean, if. It's just, it's just kind of, you know, it's kind of a, throwing on a lot of people's sounds. It's, it's fast and. And it's con- it's confusing and it's, there's a lot of stuff going on.
The, the building permits that. And I, I don't need to argue, Jerry, at all. I'm just voicing my opinion. The, the building permits that we've been approving are census. For a deck or after Loves.
I'm shocked.
It, it isn't, those things aren't going to affect. A person's. Their. Um. The value of their homes, the val- value of their lives. And I don't, I can tell by your face that doesn't matter to you. But it does matter to people out there.
Well.
And, and, and as a council, I think we have to take their. Uh, feelings into consideration and well towards. But still.
No, it, it's, it's kind of like the, kinda like the, uh. The Solomon tale, you know, with the, with the baby, where you, you know, you can't have two halves of one. You, you know, that, that's unfortunately a story. It, that was the only question that I had was that. I had people ask me, what has it been a cost? How long is it gonna take? What all's involved? Well, and, and I, I. That's it.
The. Your questions have been answered.
Yeah, well, yeah, I mean.
To the best of our ability.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, you don't know. And that's, and that's just the story. Uh, but like I said. I- it's just a concern. That was what I was going with and now you know. Go from there. But like I said, because there's not gonna be settled at all until we hear from the Supreme Court. Right?
Absolutely.
But that's it.
And I do want, Mayor, to clarify on a point of order. Uh, is it your position that public comment, as long as they call ahead and put themselves on the agenda and last indefinitely? For speaker?
Well, it specifically says on our agenda, under public comments, they are limited to three minutes.
Correct.
This, by putting themselves on the agenda, they have an opportunity to ask questions and get answered. Take longer than three minutes.
Okay, I, I just want to, um, make sure that that was the understanding of the council because I think. When we instituted, uh, rules for public comment. It was anyone who is not asking for action from the council or giving a report is a member of the public. And or otherwise employed by or subcontracting to the council is a member of the public. And I just want to clarify, moving forward, that any member of the public for public comment. According to what you're saying here, as legal counsel, I need to understand this and call ahead, be placed on the agenda. And speak indefinitely with no action requests.
He filled out an agenda form.
We've, we've done it before.
And I, I'm not saying I haven't seen this. I, I know there's other members of the public that have done the same thing. And I'm clarifying, is that what the council has established? And is that the council's understanding of rules for public comment?
They have three minutes under public comment and they fill out an agenda form and they can ask questions. And hopefully get answers. And that's what his attempt was. Tonight, he's been here before. We've had other members of the public. Um, also do the same thing. So thank you for your input. Okay, moving on then, that brings us to the mayor's report. And what I want to report there is that. We officially closed our Echo Valley loan on March thirty first as scheduled. We did need, however, one signature on a twenty four page document. That was overlooked and so K L J, uh, made the effort to, and it was the contractor's, uh, signature. And so they took the effort to get that done and as of April fourteen. It's officially completed. Uh, Carolyn has, uh, the copy of the application and. Uh, through discussion with Sajid Kuta Housing, has got it, understood how, uh, to move forward with that. So, uh, and then the good news is, as Dana indicated. There's a pre-construction on May twenty sixth to kind of get things in order on how they're gonna. Get started and what their completion date might be.
Mary, do we know what time that pre-construction meeting is?
Uh, Carolyn, what did Tim Hartman say?
And do we have any members of the city council attending?
You're certainly welcome. You're a street committee person.
Yeah, I think I'd like to attend.
So.
I, I mean, I, I went to the last one.
Would you make note of that? Uh, that Stan and, uh, Rick, that would be included that from the street committee? And anyone else that's. That would like to attend that. Okay, uh, the second point I was going to make tonight is that. Both the street committee and the personnel committee were, uh, in action here in the last two weeks. Uh, dealing with, uh, situations, so, uh, and that information is gonna come forth. Uh, shortly through other reports. So with that being said, that completes my report for tonight. And that moves us to the finance officer report, so would you like to take it from there, Carolyn?
Sure. So there, um, the upcoming meetings in June and July. Um, due to. The first week in June, I will be attending the finance officers meeting. Our typical date would be June first, but I just really don't like the first day. Of the month to have a meeting. Uh, bills don't come in. It, it's kind of a useless date, you know, to have a meeting. So, um, I would propose having it on the fifth. For the reason that rest of the week I will be out for finance officers training. And by moving it on the fifth, then, um. I feel like, uh, well, then the fifteenth. I have a conflict because I will be attending my, uh, Southport Municipal Board. Meeting that's going to be held in Yankton because our board president is from Yankton and. One of our meetings that's held is always in their town, so I would not be here for that. So I would propose moving that meeting to the twenty second then. Then we move into July and that first week in July is when we super crazy with. July fourth landing on Tuesday and the rest of the week, everybody's crazy busy trying to get celebrations. Happening and all the things and prep for that, so. If we moved it to the thirteenth. That would be a better result, I think.
And we are talking July. And we are talking July. Carolyn, do we need to take them one at a time and see if the council women can do it?
Yeah, I'm just trying to kind of give you a line out of what my proposal would be.
Okay, and then, and then what was the auction day in June? You didn't like June one? Okay, okay.
And I'm not, I'm just trying to give you guys this information. If you have conflict, it's definitely up for discussion. I mean, I'm not saying this is how it has to be. I just wanted.
I have a conflict on the twenty-second that I can't change.
Uh, twenty-second of June?
Yes. Could we probably do the fifth and the nineteenth?
I'm, I'm fine with that.
Yeah, be kind of balanced. That date one more time.
The only thing about the nineteenth, if I was able to interject again, sorry, um. So, since I am down in Yankton, I was going to take the extra Friday. To um, go visit my sister who lives like uh, thirty miles from there. And so I would not be able to. Get the packet information sent out to you two days prior, like I normally do for that Monday. So possibly on the twentieth. Tuesday, cause I could on Sunday come in and get things sent out to you for that.
Fine by me. Stan, does the twentieth work in June?
Yep, twentieth works.
Then like looking into July because of that first week being so crazy with the holidays and celebration. I was going to propose doing the thirteenth to keep it on a Thursday. And, um.
What if we just do one meeting that month? Do it on the thirteenth.
I had actually thought about too, but I didn't know if um, you guys will.
I mean, we used to just have one meeting a month and it kind of worked.
We seemed to get by just fine.
Okay, so did we have any earlier dates for July set yet? We did not. And now we're talking about the possibility of the thirteenth.
Cause the sixth would be, but that's kind of the start of celebration, everybody getting things set up and.
I, I would be very excited to maybe potentially schedule one meeting in July for the thirteenth.
I would be equally as excited. Because it's just, it's just a week apart.
And we're gonna see it on our paycheck.
You do know we went to two meetings a month so we can get out of here earlier. Yeah, well, that didn't work.
That only extended them. Okay, so is everybody okay then with the thirteenth? For now?
Dan's very excited.
Yeah, my proposal was to move the August meetings. Due to, because if we did the second meeting in August or in July on the twenty-seventh. Then it would just be one week to the next meeting, but we could be back on schedule then.
Yeah. So are we committing to this now?
I guess, you know, I mean, I have it on the agenda, you can, but if you would rather have more thought on it.
Oh, I, I don't need more thought.
Put a little ad in the papers before saying that we are moving our.
Right, put them on Facebook too.
Yeah, I'm over, I guess I, I get the paper still, but I think more people Facebook.
Carolyn, could you tell me what the second date in August would be?
The seventeenth.
Seventeenth, perfect.
So August third?
Third, August third.
August third and August seventeenth are the two normal, normal.
So, so are we good on the June dates? Are we committing to the fifth from the twentieth in June? Okay.
Do you need a motion for that, Carolyn, or how does that?
Yes, I would like somebody to make a motion for June fifth. And the uh, twentieth and July thirteenth.
Okay, Mike's moved, is there a second? Any further discussion, questions or comments?
Well. Turn your paper over.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye, aye.
Opposed? Okay, on to the bat.
Um, then I was just gonna give an update, so I had sent out letters to all the conditional use permit holders. Depending on what their conditional use permit was as far as bringing back required paperwork. Um, found out in the process that I did not know daycares are exempt from having a sales tax license. So, um. And of course, they're in their homes, they're less than twenty, they're not certified with the state, so really. Found out daycares are not needing to submit any kind of documentation to. Okay, or into state, so.
State?
No, they, they're not certified with the state. They're, cause they keep under their certain number and. And sales tax is, they're exempt. I have, have a letter from the department for everything, so.
So you'll be removing them from the.
They'll still require conditional use permit. They just won't have to submit me any of that documentation. Okay, I thought, and I'll look at our ordinance because I think we submitted in the ordinance of that and so we may need to pull that out.
Okay.
I just assumed that that's. And then, um, the other conditional use permits went out to uh, salons. And they have all submitted all their required paperwork back to me. And so then the Airbnbs, I'm still waiting on and. Giving them some leeway since they didn't know they needed all this stuff, but I think the state's gonna be kind of bombarded. Getting this, you know, these, this required documentation. I understand with, you know, Trishish or Tishishy, but she was a new one, you know, you guys had already approved these other Airbnbs, so. Um, but they've all reached out to me and they're working on getting it done, so. Didn't have any problem doing it, they just wanted a longer timeframe than my April seventeenth date. And I said, well, I had to put something in there or you guys would have waited forever, so. And then my other agenda item is last month or last meeting. I spoke to you about Munich Code doing our ordinance rewrite. You guys approved the contract or the agreement with the Black Hills Local Council to do our zoning ordinance rewrite. Munich Code had given me a quote to do that theirs and then I decided to look at American Legal. Because they are supported by the municipality. And found out that I gave you paperwork on it. They have fifty-eight towns in South Dakota that they can. Sioux Falls and Rapid City. I mean, those are the two biggest towns. I think they must be a reputable company. To do this and I do know the gentleman who is the spokesperson for this and I've worked with him before on some things. Significant difference and in asking what that possibly could be. I was told that Munich Code does kind of focus more on the bigger cities and so, um. And it just depends on the page count there too, so. American Legal customizes their quotes based on. Smaller cities and trying to make it more. Reasonable money wise. So their proposal was ten thousand. With ten thousand seven hundred and sixty-five versus the thirty thousand that I got from Munich Code. So my recommendation would be to go with American Legal.
And then I would imagine they're just gonna start penetrating all of the small communities as well. I mean, be kind of foolish not to follow.
And then Sioux Falls and Rapid City.
Yes, Sioux Falls and Rapid City are already with them.
Wow.
Again, you know, they would pay a higher fee because they have a higher page count for their ordinances.
Did they say how long they've been?
Um, no, I guess they haven't, but. We've been with Munich Code forever, that's who originally qualified, so I just never thought to switch until. Was looking into the.
Complicated to switch over. They'll do it for ten seven sixty back.
They'll review them all, take out the language that is. Doesn't pertain in any, you know, and, and stuff like that. And then they have legal counsel on their staff that will be reviewing them all and. Making sure that we are. Codified, or you know.
And, and, and we will need to review it.
Oh yeah, you'll review it every one, every step of the way.
Awesome.
So it's, it's not a process, it's gonna happen in the next six months or whatever because. Take time, you'll have to review it and whatever, so. So I guess that I would like to have a motion on to go with American Legal for the rewrite of our ordinances if that's. You're comfortable doing that based on my recommendation.
So move second.
It's been moved and seconded to utilize American Legal. Any further comment, questions? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, okay?
And I don't have it on there, but I just was gonna comment that I'm working on the D-works. I did go up to Keystone. On Monday and reviewed how their software works and. It's looking promising, not hard to understand, but they are, I'm just gonna show you an example. So this is the questionnaires information that I got. I have to answer all these questions so that they know how to set things up, so. It's not gonna be an overnight deal either. There will be a process to it, but I think it'll be a big thing. We'll just continue to keep working forward on it, so.
All right.
That's all I have.
Okay, thank you, Carol. All right, yeah.
All ready? Let's see, lawn mowers. First you guys know, we've had two ordered from Jenner for two years and haven't seen anything, so I went to. Beaufort County. It said they could get us two. They can't find two, or they couldn't find two, but they finally found two mowers and they're working on trading a piece of their equipment. That they have to with another dealer to get those two lawn mowers to get for us, so they're. They're working hard for their money, so hopefully they can get it done. If they can do it, then I don't know what we're gonna have. But they are working on it, looks promising, yep.
And I will just comment, we did get the money back from generous.
Okay, yeah, and we asked for the money back from generous, cause we'd already paid.
And this is something that we worked through the street committee with, we.
Yeah.
Uh, when you came up with this idea and moving forward, we first of all checked with Stan and Rick. To get their approval to move forward. Then when you kind of got it together. We went back to them once again and said, what do you think? They gave us a heads up and then I. Sent that information out to everyone to keep everyone involved in the process, so thank you.
Yeah, and then the mowers.
Oh yes.
We're gonna get traded in to Jenner and so. Um, we need a motion to surplus, we need a motion to surplus those and I've already got the, the appraisals done.
And the appraisals are, just reflect that they do have to either go to auction or sealed bid process. Because they're more than five hundred dollar value.
Okay, and when you, and when you surplus them, you have information regarding each one of their mower, the mowers and. When you repair it on and so forth. With that being said, do I have a motion to uh, surplus the two mowers? What kind are they? The old ones?
Yeah, yeah, our old ones are components.
Okay, the two old mowers then, unless I get this mixed up. Okay, do I have a motion to surplus the two old mowers? Dan's moved.
Second.
Mike seconded. Any questions or concerns? All those in favor say aye? Opposed? Motion carries.
Do we have any pushmowers?
We do.
I've got an excellent. Don't go there, Blake, shut up, that's not funny.
I got a rider, I can help you.
Pool update, where I'm, you know, last year we painted the floor and it didn't turn out so well through the. Summer, but I'm gonna come up with another plan. After the guy Diamond Vogel, and he thinks we can use traffic paint with. The grid in it, he thinks that would last a lot better than the concrete paint itself. And like, I don't know, Dan, if you've ever noticed that it sticks better than the traffic paint does, so. We'll get that cleaned up and hopefully. The winter wasn't very hard on the pool.
What's that?
Be the only thing going on.
Yeah.
Is that because it was a block of ice?
Well, it melted and blew into the lines and so hopefully it didn't break anything. Uh, airport project's going good, they got all the, the milling done. Uh, they did have. Both of their scrapers are broke down, so kind of. Took a little bit of time out of there, but they're still making pretty good progress out there. I don't know if you guys have noticed the mountain. Millings out there. It's more gravel than millings, but it'll still be. And that's all I have.
Um, what about the drainage issue that we talked about at the last meeting?
Oh, yeah. Yep, I looked into it. After the meeting, I went over there the next day and almost all the water was gone. But I still think, you know, with Rick, we can look at. And uh, maybe just cleaning that drainage out a little bit so it runs. Better and it would drain through your property along the edge of where the coffee shop is in your property down there, so.
Well, and when it snows like that, I mean. It, it comes down all of South Boulevard and it's a lot of times will cross the road right there by uh. Norris and then hit that gutter and run down. I mean, the water that's ending up back there, I mean, it's, it's not just from one place. Because they talked to me about that there was all coming from my pile. So I told them, I said, well, you want me to move it somewhere else? Well, I did and it. And a lot of it. More of an issue, so.
A lot of it came from their yard too, I mean, it's just low.
Well, when I went and looked at that after the meeting, I noticed that there was a huge, huge snowbank on there. Uh, northwest corner and that was just simply melting and the only place it had to go was. Into that low spot bayou, so yes, a lot of it came from their own yard, some came from other places. But the main thing is, it's obviously dry enough that it just went down. It doesn't have great grass.
Garrett, you you're talking about. Cleaning off the drainage by the old bowling alley property?
Uh nope, uh across the street, so where the where the coffee shop is, yeah, where Max used to have his garden, and then the Forest Services. Is over there, kind of where that big, your big sign is. Across by the forest.
Yeah, well, does it go by the sign?
No.
No.
Nope, it's on the south side by that big cottonwood tree.
Oh, oh.
And it's not a deep ditch, it's just kind of a little.
Is it, is it on our property?
It's right on the.
Are you gonna do it?
Well, I'll talk to you and make sure.
Yeah, I I because boy drainage is tricky, I mean, I.
Well, and Tyler would probably assist him, right?
And it wouldn't be anything drastic, it would just probably, you know, just clean it, because you know when stuff drains, the dirt gets in there and it fills in.
Yeah, and we'll look at it, we'll kind of sort it out, yeah, I'm up for that.
Good, thank you. And then you mentioned the well update, we see that.
Sorry, yeah, um we did find a new uh contractor to work on our wells. And I contacted him and he was here right away and pulled the well and we're waiting. He's looking to see if we can use a different uh brand of pump. Than what we normally have used, but he seems, and Westwood Remind Me Jones uses them also too, so.
What does a pump cost? Okay, I.
Twenty-five to thirty thousand?
Twenty-five to thirty thousand?
Yeah. So does he, where's he based out of? Uh, Gillette, I think he's in the same area as.
But he got over here that fast?
Yeah.
Whoa. Good enough.
So, well, it's a good deal, it's been a struggle. And everybody's dealing with it too around here. Finding someone.
All right. Well, good job of staying with that until you you found it. Hey, anything else?
I think that's it.
Okay, is there any other items for discussion? That someone wants to bring up, no action will be taken?
Oh, uh. The, we had briefly talked about the camera, bring the camera, deal up again. Um, just discussion, kind of see how everybody kind of feels about um. You know, we had conversation about having um some cameras uh placed throughout the city, mainly exits, just kind of. Um in the event some kind of goes on, you know, um I think that it's kind of a good idea to have. For safety issues, uh a lot of different reasons. Um, you know, maybe one had um, and and I had talked to. Who, who deals with all of our, Dirckleson? Is it Dirckleson that deals with most of our computer stuff?
Larson, Ron Larson.
Ron Larson. Um but anyway, I'd kind of visited with him a little bit, and he was, had said the last time the discussion came up, he was, you know. Trying to kind of, you know, make the city understand that he was a little reluctant because of the cost. And um in other places, um he had encouraged people to, or cities to kind of work with. Private businesses as far as, you know, if we need to view footage, which I know, you know, if we ever need video, things like that, I just. Uh, yeah, it seems like anytime, even with my stuff, um. Anytime that I've ever needed some of those cadets, usually when you find out you have an issue. And so I think if the city did do this, the city, it should be a city deal that, you know. And do you remember approximately what that cost was the last time you talked about it, Carol, because I think it was three, wasn't it three, Garrett?
Hmm.
Um, and I, it just.
I don't think I was the one that contacted her or was working with her.
Yeah, I could say, I think. I can't remember who was that talked with them, now this was. About five years ago, yeah. Marty got it, hopefully, um but. You know, I. I think if the right situation had happened in our community. Um, what the city would spend. Um to have that. Um, tool, it would pay for itself. Um there's just a lot of different situations, I think it helps with law enforcement, overall safety, um gives you a good idea who's in your community. Um, you know, and. I I just, I think it's a really good idea. That we should pursue.
Okay. So are you thinking this is like urgent and emergency that we get? Get it purchased and in place right now, or is this something we should explore? Make good choices and budget for next year and?
Yeah, I mean, I think it should just be on the, you know. Something that the city should, you know, really look into, um I did, when I did talk with Ron, because he came in the store the other day. Um and again, he kind of said that I go, you know, with, you know, maybe Golden West. Could handle that exit, you know what I mean, but the problem with that is, is. Um, you know, we have another road then that goes directly to our school from the one oh nine. And, you know, I I I I just think that we should. It should be our standalone equipment that we should, you know, service and go from there. Um, the the extra footage, if we ever needed it, I'm sure Rick wouldn't have a problem, I've pulled footage for.
Yeah, we've done it before a lot.
Yeah, so you know, that's just extra on top of, but I I would like to see that the, you know, it's. The start of a discussion to hopefully get that budgeted and.
So would you be willing to take the lead from that?
Yeah, and I'll, and I'll, and Ron did tell me, he said, um. If you do decide to pursue that, um he said, you know, the 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 cost. Is is what was kind of concerning to him, and so I, but he said, if you guys, you know, have the conversation and it's something that you feel. You want to move forward with, he can get some of those costs pulled together, um to get them to us, so I'll work with him on that.
Okay.
See what I can come up with, so. And maybe work with Garrett too.
Is that some work, I can give that off the state somewhat with state cameras? I mean, I don't know if those are the same type of.
Yeah, I'm not certain.
You know what I mean, where they, where you can get access to that equipment through the state, because they have it up on the states now.
Yep, and um I. I believe that if it's city equipment like that, like not just anybody can log in and see what's going on.
Yeah, well, I'm just saying, the the state might have a purchasing program. With whatever company they're using, can the city piggyback into those?
See, which I think would be beneficial to begin with, because whatever system that they're working, those cameras always working. You know, and I think they're all digital, and you know, that's, I think, what Ron was talking about when he said, well. The only reason I'm not super excited to give you a quote on that is because it's probably very expensive, but like I said, you know, when it comes time to the safety of our community and stuff. I think. One time is, you have it pay for itself, if you feel that way, so.
Okay.
Well, and and you know, it'd be interesting to see, you know, camera locations and then what it's gonna cost, where. There's gotta be a computer someplace, right?
Well, yeah, and I think most of it, you know, is a, I think the state stuff is all. Uh monitored and stuff, different, an agency that handles all of that. So, you know, the city could do something like that, you know, um. I'll look into it, kind of see what our options are, and you, I mean, he might not have all of the options, but maybe. Then if he doesn't, then I can contact the state or whoever, because, I mean, you go into about any city. I mean. Even smaller cities in South Dakota, I mean, they got cameras all over the place, and. I I I think it serves itself well.
Didn't KOTA have one on the schoolhouse?
They used to, you know, it's.
Yeah, see it a lot, but I don't know if it's still there.
Okay, so Carol, would you like keep that on the agendas, just to keep this, so it doesn't get off our radar?
So I can update.
Yeah.
As we do.
Okay, so our next city council meeting will be evening fourth at six thirty. And I think we have a request for executive session, so if you would like to do that, please.
I made a motion, we go into executive session for the purpose of discussing legal personnel issues. According to SDCO one dash twenty-five dash two.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, thank you. Good night, I say goodnight. Anyone need a break? Yeah, you call us out of executive session. And does anyone want to make a motion relative to the discussion?
I'll make. I'll make the motion, but. Uh, I don't know exactly how it's, how it's decided how it was gonna read, so.
Carolyn, please read it again. The motion was discussed to. Approve a second attorney retainer agreement for limited representation. For a flat fee of twenty-five thousand dollars plus expenses. With the talent attorney, Ron Parsons Jr. Pursuant to council approval of February sixth. Pursuant to council approval by motion on February sixteenth.
Okay, it's the, uh Stan is moved, anyone, uh do I have a second?
Stan, you you have another comment?
No, I just wanted to make sure that was right with Stephanie. Yes, okay, I'm good with that, yes.
Is that your motion?
Okay, it's been moved, is there a second? Second. Okay, Stan moved, Kelly seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose?
Aye.
Okay, roll call vote?
Uh. February sixteen. Yeah.
Carolyn, would you call the roll, please?
Welch.
Yay.
Morgan.
Name.
Houston.
Yay.
Pop, or Stan Anderson, sorry.
What, yeah, what about me? Uh, yay, yay.
Don't get both twice.
Sorry, I. Didn't see you over there. My blinders were on.
Name.
Okay, Mike Anderson.
Oh, sorry.
Sure.
You're good.
Okay, so there is uh four. Uh in favor, two opposed.
Okay, I I I got, got a. Question.
Would you still say, Carol?
Motion carries.
Yes, motion carries.
Oh. So Stephanie, are you gonna get in touch with Ron and have him? Tune up the date?
Yep.
And then then we're good to go?
Yep.
And then Mary sends it, and then he's, uh assigns it, and then sends it to Ron, and then he sends back. Assigned copy that we held.
Yeah. So, and he's usually, I mean, I have his cell phone. So I would imagine we could get the whole thing accomplished tomorrow, as long as he's in an office. You know, even with revisions.
But it's just like changing February to.
Yeah, I mean, I would imagine we can get the assigned, counter assigned. Swap made tomorrow, I would like to do that.
Awesome.
Yeah.
I gotta say, I think now we did it the right way, things we maybe didn't. Put to practice or whatever, when you vote like this, because. I was dreaming that we aren't letting them know what's going on, and.
And and. You know, this is so imperative. Would you get me the revised document with the the April date? And then I will deliver it to the city office?
Yeah, absolutely.
You know, I I mean, I don't want it to disappear and.
Again, yeah.
Email space again.
Right. Yeah, I'll definitely, actually, I'll send it. I'll send it out to the world council.
Awesome.
And that way, you'll all know when it's been sent to the municipal. And then maybe you can follow up just immediately, it should be in your inbox. Yeah.
Okay, is there any other discussion?
Yeah, I have one other item that's unrelated to this, but it.
Okay. Twenty-five.
Got approved.
Oh.
Stan, what's your question?
Uh, well, I just have a comment, I just have kind of concern with the the way. We have people that come in and they, instead of public comments, they make it a, an agenda item, a concern form, and I. And I know there was a new bill that was passed by the Senate. Senate Bill one sixty-two that gives government bodies the right to limit public comment. Uh. In a public meeting, period. Uh so unless they have uh something they want done, or have a, have a legitimate agenda item. Uh I'm just a thought that I think somehow we should sometimes limit those, because. They come in, they talk about the same thing that we've heard a hundred times, and uh repeat it five times, and twenty minutes later, we. That's the end of it.
And I agree with you, Stan, um it's only been in pretty recent. Probably even the last. Two years at most that I have seen. Members of the public being added to the agenda for no action item by the council, or no report, no. Discussion of, you know, a, an action item to come, it's just. Public comment, but they're on the agenda, so it's an end run around the public comment rules. That this body voted to approve, so I agree, um you know, I I think we need to clarify. Are our public comment rules just kind of a farce, or? Did we intend to allow that little runaround? Cause that's happening more and more, almost every meeting.
Every meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Change it.
Okay.
We should. Just say what Stan just said about the state, and that's why, so they don't think we're just changing it to retire the listener to it.
Okay.
Correct. Correct, I think we just need to, I don't want to solve the problem tonight, but.
But I I think a suggestion we could consider is if you're making an agenda item request. That it has to involve. An action item from the council, he clearly had no action item for the council. Um, he can ask questions of the council at any point in time, on you guys' phones, in the evening, um. Have his discussion with his neighbors over coffee that he kept referring to, but. He wasn't asking this council to do anything. And, yeah, he went on making the same points that I've. Been hearing and not publicly comment every meeting.
Okay.
Yeah, correct.
Item twenty-five, uh we need to approve advertising for open position, do I have a motion?
I make a motion that we advertise for the Open Public Works Department position.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, Dan is moved, um Mike seconded, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose? Motion carried, is there any other? Okay, no more other, meeting's adjourned.